I call this August 16th Board Meeting to order, please. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the City Council ready to roll. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Councilmember Bertani, here. Councilmember Moy.
Here.
She's online. Councilmember Panduro.
Here.
Councilmember Tim.
Here.
Councilmember Tonison.
Here.
Vice Mayor Vicaro.
Here.
And Mayor Price.
Here.
Thank you.
And the invocation this evening will be led by Councilwoman Bertani in the absence of worship leader Gladz from Glad Tidings Apostolic Church. If you would, please, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Let us pray, and let us pray together this time. Please join me in remembering how the Lord asked us to pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy holy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our sins, as we forgive those who sin against us. Save us from the time of trial, and deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. And let everyone say, amen.
Amen. And the leaders and the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And we turn now to council reports. Mr. Vice Mayor, would you begin, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Always great to see a packed house. It's been, I think, about over a month since we've been here because we took National Night off because we were all out there in the community. I'll keep this really brief because I know we have a big agenda tonight. Some great backpack giveaways in our city over the weekend and the weekend before that, too, at the Bethel Community Church. I know we were all involved in at least one of them. And, you know, it's always great to see the families out there in need, that really need these supplies for school. And that's the last thing I'm going to say is, school's starting tomorrow in the city of Fairfield. Of course, close to my heart, being a former educator, I would say to all the parents and the students out there, please be careful. Always please be safe. I wish them all the luck in the world. I actually have a grandson starting kindergarten tomorrow, so I'm probably as excited as anybody. But, yeah, I just wish them a great new, a great school year. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Bertani, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the interest of time, I am going to forego a report this evening. The one thing that I would like is to say once again thank you to Greg Stepanisich and his lovely wife, who are here in the audience. Greg served for 24 years as our city attorney. Masterful, masterful, masterful. A good friend, a great advisor, an outstanding attorney, and a wonderful advocate for the city of Fairfield. He has done so much that all of us don't know about, or many of us don't, but believe me, he is the reason that so many wonderful accomplishments have been made. It was under his leadership guiding us through very important and sometimes thorny issues. So Greg and his wife, who just retired this week as well, are going to go and have fun. And it's well deserved. And as I advised, spend your kids' inheritance. Go for it. Spend the money. All right, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Moy, please, on Zoom. Councilmember Moy, your report, please.
Yes, thank you. I guess I was having a hard time unmuting. I, too, was going to make this really short. I just wanted to say that with the back to school and everything that's going on, and yes, we all went to, you know, great events to get the students ready, and I think we had enough backpacks for everybody who goes to school in the school district about. So that is awesome. But the next thing is, I just wanted to tell the students that you get a free cupcake from one of our best bakeries in downtown on Thursday or Friday. You go in after school with your parents, and you just get a cupcake. So my good friend Nick down there is inviting all the kids down, and he's ready for you. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Panduro, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to just reiterate a big thanks to, we had so many backpack giveaways this past weekend, and so I just wanted to give a specific thank yous to all the nonprofits, the service providers that were out there, like the Lions Club. They were out there at two of the events giving free ice screenings to families, which I think was fantastic. We also had, you know, Fire was out there, PD at both of them, cooking hot dogs. I think, how many, 1,400 hot dogs were cooked that day? So I'm just happy that all the families and students that were able to attend and not only get a free backpack, but also get access to a lot of different community resources. Also, I know I received a call today from a family that did not receive a backpack that day or any of the days. So if there are families out there that are still in need of school supplies and/or backpacks, or actually any resources, please do contact the School District Family Resource Center. They do have supplies still of backpacks for those students that are still needing some to have a successful start to the school year. And Mayor, that is all for me. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I say really quickly?
Oh, absolutely, please.
I know that the Mount Calvary Baptist Church also has excess backpacks, at least as of Sunday. So if in need, please call the Mount Calvary Baptist Church, and I'm sure they'll be able to help you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, please. Or Mr., Councilman Tim, please. I'm sorry. Thought I got promoted for a second. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Again, to give out backpacks, we were everywhere, but it was the one probably, well, they were all big. But you see all these little kids, and it was fun. And, yeah, we were busy. We go from one event to another event. Matter of fact, I changed in the back parking lot from one Sudie Smith Foundation luncheon on, held Saturday, at Jelly Belly. And I remember her, she was a lunch cafeteria worker at Armio. Her family started a huge foundation, and they now give scholarships for health care and medicine to students here. And it was very well attended. It was actually sold out, several hundred people there. And, again, it's just community helping community. Today is kind of a red-letter day. Greg, we will miss you. We truly will. It must feel funny sitting out there instead of up here. But you've guided us, you've helped us, you've kept us out of trouble. And there's always something coming around the bend, but hopefully for both you and your lovely wife, it's a great, great retirement. So thank you very much. Mayor, that's it. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Councilman Tonison, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is with great pride and excitement that I announce that the pickleball courts will be opening on Thursday at 5:00. We're going to have some matches and ribbon cutting, and it's been a long time coming, and I appreciate how staff has handled all this. And I want to give a shout out to George Kennedy. You've been instrumental in getting this done, and you've been to all the meetings, you've helped out with the design, and I think you deserve kudos. So thank you, sir.
The city manager and I were very privileged to be invited over to Sullivan School, and it was the ribbon cutting for the Dual Immersion Language Program that will now be at that school. It started 10 years ago over at Beagle Wilson, and now it's at Sullivan School. So it was a wonderful experience. And, Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick items. So just a reminder to everybody in the community and City Council, coming up September 10th and 11th, we have the 30th Annual Tomato and Vine Festival being held downtown Fairfield. So please be on the lookout for information on that, and we hope to see you out there. I am very excited to announce, hot off the presses just from today, we were notified that through the Federal Transportation Authority, we received a little over a $12 million grant to help us in our transit electrification process. So special thanks to our transit team, Diane Feinstein, Sean Vigil, and April Cobb. The funds will be helping us to purchase five electric buses, install charging infrastructure, as well as do training on how to maintain that fleet. So that actually helps us into Phase One of electrification. And then, secondarily, other sort of longer topic, just want to share that we have been in conversations, our fire chief has been in conversations with Cordelia Fire District. I know that there's been some information out there recently related to a countywide fire tax. About three years ago, Cordelia District, you know, identified that they were experiencing some financial difficulties, and so they have approached us about potentially contracting as their fire protection agency with the new Fire Station 36 that'll be opening up in 2024 off of Business Center Drive. We are exploring whether or not we would be able to provide fire service for Cordelia District. And so those conversations are ongoing. Later here in the next couple of months, we look to bring something back to City Council with some of the details on what that might look like. And that is my report, Mayor.
And are there any changes to the agenda?
I believe the Vice Mayor had a request.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, with the consent of the council, I'd like to move Item 22 of public hearings before the new business.
Okay.
Is that okay with the rest of the council?
Yeah, we'll do that, okay?
Second.
Move in a second? That's what we'll do, then. Mr. City Attorney, your report, please.
I have nothing to report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Madam Clerk, your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let everyone know, we had 11 candidates file paperwork to run for elected office last week. Three for mayor, three for District 1, two for District 3, and three for District 5. And also, I just want to thank Greg Stepanisich and his wife Karen. Greg, you provided a lot of guidance for me when I was appointed city clerk, and I didn't know what I was doing, so thank you. And I wish you well in your retirement. That's it, Mayor.
And we turn now, Madam Clerk, to presentations, please. The first presentation.
And the first presentation is proclamation recognizing Greg Stepanisich's retirement, presented by Mayor Harry Price.
And Greg, would you and your wife come forward, please? And Bill, if you're ready to shoot some pictures, that would be great.
I will. If you're ready.
And the proclamation reads, "In recognition of Greg Stepanisich's retirement, August 16, 2022. Whereas Gregory Greg Stepanisich retired on June 30, 2022, after almost 45 years as a municipal lawyer, and he served the city of Fairfield for 24 years. And whereas Greg spent his first 20 years of law practice in Richards, Watson, and Gershon's Los Angeles office, opening their San Francisco office in 1997. And whereas in August of 1997, Fairfield City Council requested proposals for its first contract attorney, awarding the contract to RWG with Greg designated as Fairfield City Attorney. And whereas Greg grew up in San Francisco, and as a child, his family drove by the old Solano County courthouse on their way to his grandmother's house. And he always thought, important things must be happening here. Whereas in the early 1970s, Greg had another connection to Fairfield, and this is significant, too. He spent time serving in the Air Force Reserves at Travis Air Force Base." Pretty remarkable, isn't it? And it goes on to read, then. "Whereas Fairfield became the foundation of RWG's Northern California office, that over the years grew to 10 attorneys, and in 2022, their practice expanded to include a Sacramento office. And whereas with Greg's vast experience in municipal law and his expert guidance, he served the city of Fairfield diligently and professionally. And whereas Greg and his team were dedicated to providing a full range of legal services, addressing the continuing needs of the city of Fairfield. Now, therefore, I, Harry T. Price, Mayor of the city of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim this day, August 16, 2022, recognizing Greg Stepanisich's retirement in Fairfield, and encouraging everyone to congratulate Greg on a stellar career, and thank him for his 24 years of dedicated service to the city of Fairfield."
I wasn't sure what to do with it at first, when I was, photographs has been taken of me. It's also kind of first to be out in the audience watching the council, and I was thinking that, actually, I have served over 600 meetings in this chambers here over the course of the 24 years, and there were, you know, many meetings went, of course, very smoothly, but there were no shortage of challenging meetings, packed council chambers, and very challenging legal issues to have to address. It actually kept all of us on the RWG team, always on our toes, and always having to be prepared to advise the council during those times. I had longer comments at my reception this afternoon. You have a long meeting before you, but I do want to say that this has been the most rewarding part of my career, to be city attorney of this beautiful city. Just the engagement of the community, the diversity of the community, and all the programs and innovative policies that have been implemented over those 24 years were really something and a tribute to council and to staff for directing the city in this way. So, again, thank you. I have to thank this council and all past councils for giving me the opportunity to serve the city. It was an extraordinary honor to do so. You're in great hands with David right now, which I'm also delighted about. And, again, wishing everyone great success. I know the city will continue to prosper, and I'll stay in touch and look forward to seeing what the city does over the years. And, again, thank you so much for this proclamation tonight and having a chance to be here with you. It's been great. Thank you.
And Madam Clerk, our second presentation, please.
Yes, number two, proclamation declaring National Suicide and Prevention Week, presented by Councilmember Chuck Tim. And we have Tracy Lacy in the audience. She's an MHSA coordinator from Solano County. And is Charlene here as well? Yes, Charlene Novares. She is a member of the Solano County Suicide Committee. Thank you.
I'm going to let her hold the actual proclamation. We actually put it on a bigger piece of paper so we can read it. But on the serious side, this is very serious. Whereas suicide is the 12th leading cause of death in the United States, the third leading cause of death for ages 10 to 19, second leading cause of death for ages 20 to 34, and on average, there are 130 suicides per day in the U.S. And in 2020, there were 45,979 deaths. An estimated 1.2 million suicide attempts in the U.S. And whereas in 2021, there were 54 suicide deaths in Solano County, which represents an 8% increase from 2020, and 76% of the individuals who died by suicide were male. 54% of the suicide deaths were adults ages 30 to 39. 24% were seniors 60 and over. 17% were 19 to 29, and 4% of the suicide deaths were under the age of 18. 74% of the suicide deaths were Caucasian, 13% Asian American or Pacific Islander, 6% Latino or Hispanic, and 5% African American, and 2% Native American. Whereas in 2021, this is Fairfield, Fairfield residents accounted for 30% of the total suicide deaths in Solano County. And in the first six months of 2022, there have already been 31 suicide deaths, according to the coroner's office. 31 in six months. Whereas LGBTQ+ youth seriously contemplate suicide at almost three times the rate of heterosexual use, and are more than four times as likely to have attempted suicide as their peers. And trans people are 12 times more likely to attempt suicide than the general public. And at least one LGBTQ youth attempts suicide every 45 seconds. And whereas the stigma associated with mental health conditions and suicide work against suicide prevention by discouraging at-risk persons from seeking life-saving help, and by further traumatizing those who have attempted suicide and those who have lost loved ones as well. And whereas suicide is And whereas suicide is a preventable national, state, local, public health problem, and as a community, we can promote awareness and efforts to develop and implement strategies to increase access to quality mental health, substance abuse disorder, and suicide prevention services. Whereas Solano County Behavior Health in partnership with Solano County Suicide Prevention Community or Committee and the community continue to strive to impact change by saving lives, envisioning a suicide-free community achieved through education and trainings, stigma reduction efforts, collaboration with partners, and the provision of resources to combat suicide. Therefore, I, Harry T. Price, Mayor of the city of Fairfield, do proclaim September 4 through the 10th, 2022, as National Suicide Prevention Week in the city of Fairfield, and encourage all residents of Fairfield to learn more about promoting mental health, wellness, and the detection and prevention of suicide. I know many people that have been impacted by this. Our council has been impacted by this. This is preventable. And ladies, I thank you for what you do. This was a long read, but if you took anything away from this, is that it happens more than once a week in our city, or in the county area. And it is a very, very big issue. And with folks like yourselves, and organizations like yourselves, I wish you Godspeed and good luck. Ladies, thank you for allowing me to present the proclamation.
Thank you so much.
Take a quick picture.
Thank you.
And I appreciate, just thank the council and the mayor so much for allowing us to raise awareness, really, and to continue to reduce stigma and discrimination. I do want to really highlight the city of Fairfield, particularly the police department, for partnering with us on implementing community-based mobile crisis. This has been a longstanding project that we've been working on. We have two programs, one community-based and one school-based program. And just to kind of highlight, I think, what you were saying, Councilman, around the numbers for Fairfield. In last fiscal year, July through June, there were 104 calls for the city of Fairfield residents for mobile crisis. And for the school-based program, there were 117 crisis calls for Fairfield and Sussoon Unified School District. And really, as a community, we can battle this and combat this together, and continue to bust stigma, and help people ask for help when they need help. It really does save lives. So thank you so much for raising awareness tonight. We appreciate it.
Madam Clerk, our third presentation, please.
Yes, Youth Photography Contest Awards. And our presenter will be Jonathan Luong, Community Development Management Analyst.
Good evening, members of the public, Mayor Price and the city council. Tonight, I'd like to recognize winners of the youth photography contest. In March of this year, the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee and staff opened a contest for youth in the Fairfield community as part of the Art in Public Spaces Program. We had asked for photograph submissions in four subject categories. Those were Faces of Fairfield, Landmarks, Downtown, and Nature. After reviewing all the submissions, the committee selected three winners. Michael Lamb for Faces of Fairfield, whose subject was his younger sister Mia Lamb. Marcus Taliaferro for both the Landmarks and Downtown, whose subjects were Larissa Produce and the Solano County Building, respectively. And Samantha Atwood for Nature, whose subject is Rockville Hiking Trails. In addition to being recognized tonight at this meeting, these winners are being awarded $125 for each category they have won. Also, their photographs will be showcased in the first floor lobby of City Hall. I'd like to congratulate the winners and thank them for attending tonight. Thank you. And I just want to check, is Samantha Atwood here? Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and recognize Michael Lamb first. If he and his family would like to come up and have a photo opportunity. And next, I'd like to call up Marcus Taliaferro, with him as mother. And if anyone's curious about the photos, you can navigate to the Art in Public Spaces Program through the city website, and you'll see the photo winners there. And keep a lookout for the City Hall lobby as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Public comments, please. The process, please.
Yes, persons wishing to address the city council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, please use the Raise Your Hand feature if you're online, or press *9 on your phone. Speakers are limited to three items, I'm sorry, three minutes per item. And our first speaker will be Jeff Traeger.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I want to bring you up to date on what's going on at the Downtown Theater. This Saturday, very, very funny woman named Paula Poundstone is coming this Saturday, 8:00. You can get your tickets by going to ftpresents.com. And on the 27th, we have a night of stand-up comedy benefiting the Police Activities League. Coming up later in the year will be a tribute to John Lennon, and I just got a confirmation on Pete Esquivido and his Latin Jazz Orchestra coming up. Before I get into something, I'd like to say something to Councilwoman Bertani, you lost one of your alumni last couple of weeks, the great Bill Russell. And he was the first African American to ever manage or coach in any major sports. He was a great, great American hero. He was more than just a basketball player. He did so much for civil rights, you can't, it's impossible to put it all in words. A great, great human being. Getting back to the summer music series, I'd like to say that coming up in two weeks, we have Rosalynn Pugh and Friends with her Sound of Gospel jazz and rhythm and blues. And I just want to play something from a couple of weeks ago. We had Papa Joe and his, the New Deal. And I'd like to play something, help me. Yeah, okay. We also, last week, we went out to Ridgeview Park out in Cordelia. And I'm telling you, they were coming out of their houses in the neighborhood until about 8:30, until it was pitch black, and we had, and nobody wanted to leave. It was just great. So I, it was just, it's going very well, and I, again, want to thank the city.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
And our next speaker is Nora Martinez.
Mr. Mayor, tough act to follow, can't sing or dance, nothing, just have no talent. So what shall I say, recite poetry? Shakespeare, perhaps? No, let me digress. I have a lot of questions regarding housing, as you all know, it's my concern, I lost my housing. And I cannot get on a hard waiting list to get accommodations that are suitable for my age and culture, so to speak. I had a studio artist, and I'm proposing to put a mural up at the senior center. And it's not funded, and I don't know if it'll actually come about. It should reflect how the city has grown, and let me compliment Mr. Mayor, it's a lot better now. A lot of the homeless are back in jail where they belong, it's rent-free, they don't belong in the shelter. The shelter is for homeless people of Fairfield. They brought them in from Oakland, and Richmond, and New York, and wherever, and it's overcrowded and dangerous. On Prop 47, I wanted to rescind it because unfortunately, the shelter is not a success story for rehabilitating criminals, you know? Black criminal life matters, you know, and I sure would like to help a lot of black convicts. My own son, Rodney Macklemore, is a convict, and he's black. He was adopted by a supervisor at CPS, so we know the failure of black youth or young people, so to speak. I'm the birth mother, and been denied, he was kidnapped. It's a long story, it's never been settled. I have 50 million dollar, 50 million questions, because I sued, and I had never actually gotten any answer to my questions whatsoever. But let me digress again. It's a lot better now. I see a lot of the homeless are somehow getting services to them. They're incapable of getting transportation, the bus does not allow them, you know, you can have a couple of bags, but they will argue, they don't allow excessive shopping carts on the bus. So the homeless can't get around to the services that they so need. And it hurts my heart, actually, that the police does a good job, you know, they have the intervention team with the homeless, and I think that's an improvement. But I was going to address the city council and say, well, billions of dollars have been way, I read the article in the paper about the blind guy, and I do know Jackie Burnside personally from the shelter. I know a lot of homeless personally, and what is the solution, you know? What genius is going to come up?
Would you conclude, please?
Well, thank you for letting me address my heartfelt concern. Sorry I couldn't dance, it was a hard act to follow from the theater. I'll do better next time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bertani, for tolerating me. Everyone knows I'm pretty outspoken, and I didn't have a script in front of me, but I rehearsed it mentally.
Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you, goodbye.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brian Lynch.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Tonight, I want to say Code Enforcement Officer Elizabeth Dolby is a superstar. That's a message. I'm going to discuss a couple more messages, but they're negative. And so I'll offer a few options to that. Because negative messages are associated with fear, stress, confusion, and a multitude of other effects. At the corner of Sunset and Tabor on a vacant lot, there are two big signs state, "No trespassing, no loitering," by order of PC 555.2, or you will be prosecuted by the Fairfield PD. Who's that directed towards? Me, because I don't like his vacant lot? My neighbor and his two kids, so they don't camp on his property? Or a segment of the homeless population? There are 20 or 30 people in the area that may go onto his property. But the 5,000 to 10,000 people that live in that area are bombarded by a negative threatening message. These people driving in cars and residents exiting the apartments solely can see these signs. I seem to recall a few months ago, a similar sign in the Rolling Hills area. Now it's gone, and there are goats and sheep eating the grasses. I want goats and sheep. Another option, instead of removing the sign, paint over it with a yellow smiley face and write the phrase, "Have a nice day." Then have the developer clean up the protected creek bed, and see how the community responds. Let's head down to Claybank and Tabor. I find this developer struggling to control his lot. He's faced with thousands of dollars in damages again to his chain-link fence because people have damaged his fence. And the gates are never locked, implying lax security and no one cares. Additionally, we all know it's cheap security fencing, and the message here, and predominantly in these two districts, again, is, "Stay out, you bad people." As a result, I believe residents are reacting to these negative messages through crime, violence, drugs, alcohol, and mental and physical health problems, and more. Here's what I suggest. Aside from city boundaries and schools, institute a contract process to use chain-link fencing. They get three months, apply for a three-month extension. At six months, apply fees to benefit the neighborhood. Nine months or more, wood, plastic, or vinyl fencing.
And Brian, would you conclude, please?
In predetermined style. The point is, these developers are like a virus in our city. I recommend we tell them the messages we want in our neighborhood. Think about it. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jack Batson.
Good evening, council. Harry, with your indulgence, I would like to make comments on another item, but I have a meeting at 7:00, and I'm a presenter, so I have to do that, and this is the only time I might address on number 19.
Let me ask the city attorney, may we take this out of order?
That's at your discretion. You can take his comments now and still call the matter.
We'll do it, thank you. Go ahead, Jack, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. Folks, I'd like to talk again about number 19 today, which is the conveyance of water to Middle Green Valley. There are, of course, some very serious legal sides of this discussion, but just tonight, I'd like to say, if you are beguiled to do this and pass it tonight, I would ask you to think about, well, first off, you're doing a favor for the big people. Let's face it, this is a favor. I would like to ask you to do a favor for the rest of us in this way. At the conclusion of the general plan process, I hope that you do have an urban growth boundary in the general plan, and I would like to request that you put that up for citizen adoption. So 30-year citizen adoption, voter-approved, council-supported, council-recommended, so that we stay out of Sussoon Valley. You might say, "Well, I can't tie the hands of future councils." Well, in this case, I think you can, because there's not a scintilla of evidence that anyone in Fairfield wants to invade Sussoon Valley with our city. I don't think there, it will be. And of course, if something extraordinary comes along in the out here- comes along in the out years, there is a process by which that extraordinariness can be considered, and an exception can be made. But we are at the end of our growth. I'll take you on a little quick tour. To the west are the hills between us and Vallejo. We don't want to go in there. They're under conservation easement anyway. Then, of course, we come to Susun, and then the Marsh, and then the Base. And then to the west, we have a green belt between Vacaville and Fairfield, which I hope you maintain. There will be pressure against that. But it's a nice thing to say, here's the end of Fairfield, and here's the beginning of Vacaville. Then we have the Cement Hill Complex. Uh, then we have a valley to the north, what would that be, east, that's open. Uh, then we have more hills. And I hope, of course, again, in your general plan, you keep the hills open. Let's not, let's not do Oakland Hills with all the development up there. I'd rather see something normal. That leaves one place to expand forever, and that's Susun Valley. And I think that is a place that enhances our quality of life. I know out there, they want to maintain a pristine agricultural valley as an attraction between the two bells, and we are the bar between San Francisco, the Bay Area, and Sacramento. We think that they can make a real go of it. We think, of course, that the wine there is superb. So think about that. Think about that. If you do vote tonight for this legally questionable thing, do a favor for the rest of us at the conclusion of your general plan process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nora Dyson.
Mayor Price, city council members, um, I want to thank Jeff Trager for the live concert he did at Ridgeview Park. The residents truly enjoyed that. And it's true, they were coming out still at 8:30. And, um, this was something that prior to COVID was supposed to, or was planned for our area. There were supposed to be three of them with the food trucks Sundays. So anyway, I just hope that with next year's planning, that hopefully you, there'll be more of these in our area. Uh, next, I want to thank the Fairfield Police Department for National Night Out. I don't think people really understand how important National Night Out is. It's a very different gathering than, say, the concert. The concert, people come out, they stay with their own groups, and they enjoy the night, the evening. That's great. With National Night Out, we actually engage with each other. We're neighbors saying hello to each other. Some, you know, have been communicating via Nextdoor or Facebook for years, and this is the first time they finally actually see each other face to face. And in the past, it was hard to gauge what impacts it has. But Nextdoor has this new feature where they've got these private groups. And I'm in several of them, and I see the impact of, oh, I'm so glad I met you. It really makes a difference. National Night Out is, is not just any event. And I want to thank the police department, the fire department, the city staff for coming out. Thank you, chief, for coming out. Um, it's an underrated event. It's really important. And I just wanted to make a point of that and to thank the city for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next, our next speaker is Kay Patrice Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members and staff. Um, I'm here to provide feedback about downtown Fairfield. I live in Cordelia, but go to downtown Fairfield to both, uh, go to the restaurants there, and my hairstylist is there. And the increased energy downtown is pretty amazing. To see the local hero sign, um, just the energy, the increase in parking, um, it's just, it's, there's an energy shift, and there's a change. And it's quite wonderful. Um, but I want to highlight something that is concerning for me. And it's, um, it's not the fact that it's one, a lot of one ways. I think that is good. The problem is, people aren't aware. There's a lack of public awareness. Um, and so, uh, I went down a wrong way, um, and scared myself to death and another car. And just Monday, um, as I was pulling out, a car passed me going the wrong way. And it just, it had me shaking. Actually, I feel a little shaky right now just thinking about it, because I was really unnerved to leave. Um, and to go to the corner, and, you know, I don't know if a car is gonna just jag in there and hit. So, um, I believe that there is a possibility of, um, some accidents, fatalities, um, something really detrimental happening down here. Um, so that's the problem. But I, uh, I like solutions, too. So what I suggest is, um, and I know you've put out public awareness, but something more, um, uh, something bigger, uh, more, more like a, an awareness campaign, almost like, uh, downtown Fairfield, uh, watch your one ways, or something. You know, something in big lettering, something that we could all share, and, um, and really get the word out there. So when we're downtown, we just naturally think, watch the one ways. And that's just one idea. But, um, I just had to bring it to your attention, because I'm really worried about it. Thank you.
I do not have any other speaker cards, and there are no hands raised online.
Thank you very much. We turn now to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the city council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
And do we have any request to speak cards on any of these items, Madam Clerk?
No, just on new business.
Entertained, and then to approve the consent calendar as submitted, then moved by Councilman Tim. Is there a second? Councilwoman Panduro? Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Panduro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vicaro?
Yes.
And Mayor Price.
Motion carries unanimously. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
We turn now to new business, please, Madam Clerk.
Item 17, landscaping and lighting maintenance districts oversight committee. And our presenter is Ryan Pangeneben.
Yeah. Uh, we were, um,
Yeah, we're gonna go to item number 22.
Item 22, public hearing goes before new business.
I apologize. Sorry about that. Um, item 22, public hearing and res- public hearings and resolutions 2022-217 to 2022-232 of the city council of the city of Fairfield approving the fiscal year 2022, 2023 engineers reports, confirming the fiscal year 2022, 2023 diagrams and assessments, and ordering the fiscal year 2022, 2023 improvements for landscaping and lighting maintenance districts, number one Gateway, number three Waterman Highlands, number five Smith Ranch, number six Pepper Tree, number seven Rolling Hills, number eight Colub Estates, number 10 Southbrook, number 11 Paradise Valley North, number 12 Downtown Business District, number 13 North Cordelia, number 14 Wood Lake, number 15 Goldridge, number 16 Creekside at Cordelia, number 17 Chadborne Beck Cordelia, number 18 Goldridge Park, and number 19 Corporate Commons. And our presenter is Chris Lewis, our Public Works Management Analyst. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council, uh, members of the public. Today, we are here to hold a public hearing and request that council approve the fiscal year 2223 assessments for the city's 16 landscaping and lighting maintenance districts. And just as a recap of the process we, um, that has happened so far, council began this annual process, um, on July 5th, 2022, by adopting the notice of intent and setting a public hearing for July 19th. At the July 19th public hearing, council heard some concerns from the district property owners and rescheduled the public hearing to a later date pending a closed session with the city attorney. On July 29th, council held a special meeting and adopted resolutions 2022-182 through 2022-197, providing notice of that rescheduled public hearing, which we are holding tonight. So the final step in the annual assessment approval process is to complete the public hearing and adopt the resolutions before you to grant that final approval for the fiscal year 2223 engineers reports, assessments, and budgets for each district. So while I don't have any new information to report since the July 29th meeting, I would like to address just a recurring concern and some of the questions we've received from the residents, um, with regard to how NBS, our consultant, fits into the, um, this year's annual process. So the Prop 218 work and the engineering analysis, um, and the current community engagement that the city has hired NBS and Civic Mike to complete is to inform next year's or fiscal year 2324 assessments and engineers reports. So we're still about 10 months away from proposing and implementing those final engineers reports that NBS is developing, assisting us to develop, or they are developing it for us. So I just wanted to reiterate that NBS and Civic Mike did not have a role in the, in the development of the assessments, or the budgets, or the engineers reports that is being considered today for fiscal year 2223. This is a timeline that I shared at the July 19th meeting, which shows that we're still really in the first, um, beginning phases of this entire process, which is represented there by the green dots. Um, on the community engagement side, we have just finished up establishing the core working groups in several of the districts, which actually is really still only just a handful of people. And that's why property education, education is going to be ongoing, and it's going to continue throughout this next year. Um, since there are many property owners who are maybe just now getting to understand what the issues are, just now going back and watching some of the recorded meetings. But those folks are just as important to the process, um, as some of the people who have been with us since the beginning of this issue, since last June, um, when some of these issues first came to light. So we know there are a lot of people who are really eager to kind of get to that finish line. And some people might be frustrated because the information that's being put out is sort of repetitive. Um, and it seems like we're just now getting to work in these working groups that we've established. But, um, that's because, number one, we want to make sure that we're doing this right. Um, this is a process that really should only come around every two to three decades, barring any outrageous shifts in the economy that provides, you know, any outside influences. Um, but really, it should only come around every 20 or 30 years, um, or longer, if possible. And all the property owners are paying a lot of money to make sure that it's done correctly. So in order to do that, we need to hear from and involve all the property owners as much as we can from these districts. So that's why it took us a while to kind of get these work groups going and established and reached out to everybody. The invitation is still open for anybody to join, by the way. So that will continue to remain open throughout this process. And then, number two, the message that we've been trying to clarify is that this work that NBS and Civic Mike is helping us with right now is to inform fiscal year 2324 assessments, as I said. Um, and council authorized the loan for three of the districts, which is going to float us or supplement us through this fiscal year. Um, and so now we really have the time and, and the, um, breathing room to give each step in the process its due attention and focus. So along that same note, I don't think I mentioned this last time, but we're actually right on schedule in terms of community engagement for the process that we're trying to, to work on for next year. So it seems like we've been dealing with the same issue, but they're actually two separate, um, two related but separate issues. One was that short-term issue with the budget shortfall, which affected last fiscal year 2122, um, and this current year that we're, we're considering right now. Um, that issue really required our immediate attention, and it was sort of that mad scramble, um, but which led us to the, um, solution of offering those loans for the three districts in May of this year. And now that we have that short-term solution under control, and, and we have that in place, we can now, um, focus our attention on the long-term issue of addressing, um, the long-term, uh, budget deficits and associated, um, potential or likely service reductions that will happen if those budget deficits, um, occur. So we're doing that through, um, with Civic Mike and NBS, uh, through a concurrent process of engaging the community to understand what services they'd like, um, what they're willing to pay. We understand that the people that currently live and own property in these districts are not necessarily, certainly the people who, um, live, you know, back in 20 or 30 years ago when these districts, um, began. They may want something new. They may bring a different perspective that we have not yet heard. So we're leaving that window open for them. And then we're also doing this by developing that new engineers report. Um, that new engineers report's going to incorporate the new budget and assessments and scope of work, and pretty much new everything. And we're really aiming to have this represent the entire community as a whole. Um, what everybody decides comes together. There's going to be some compromises along the way. It's not going to be exactly what any one person would like. But what we're trying to do is make sure that when we put that ballot out in April, um, it's going to be something that everybody has, you know, sort of come together and agreed on and built together. So I know some folks, um, you know, it seems like we're working on the same issue, but, um, it's really two, two separate issues here. That wraps up the reminder of the 218 process and this timeline here. So I'll conclude my presentation by saying that, um, one, Solano County did grant the city an extension to the original August 10th deadline, so we can submit these LLMD tax rolls past that deadline. And I will now ask that council hold the public hearing and adopt the resolutions for the fiscal year 2223, approving the fiscal year 2223 engineers reports and assessments for all 16 districts. Thank you.
Before I open the public hearing, any comments or questions, colleagues? I will then open the public hearing. Do we have any request to speak?
I do have one. David Renaud.
Thank you, uh, council and staff. Good evening. First, I would like to thank the city for the extra work that has been taking place, um, in an effort to restore our landscaping. And I'm speaking for Rolling Hills District LLMD Number 7. On August 3rd, three Rolling Hills neighbors met with managers Paul Cashel, Mike Gray, Ken Radford, Richard Vasquez, and Gary Sponsler. All eight of us drove the entire Rolling Hills District and identified areas that needed attention. City crews then began several weeks of work to supplement what the new image contractors are doing. And we also appreciate the large herd of sheep and goats grazing in our open spaces. Second, we should remember that the districts are in financial trouble due to the city's mismanagement. In my conversations with neighbors, we feel very strongly that we should not be held responsible for the $410,000 loan or the $80,000 bill for our district for Civic Mike. Third, as Chris, as Chris just mentioned, I think we should be looking ahead to fiscal year 2023, 24 engineering reports. By this coming December, we are supposed to have draft reports completed. This is not a lot of time. By now, it seems we should have some idea of what these new Prop 218 reports will look like. Fourth, and again, commenting on Chris and what she just told us about the working groups, I don't believe the working groups are working, because I have been on the calls. There is an overriding lack of confidence in NBS. Civic Mike is hosting unproductive working group meetings on Zoom. Civic Mike insists on trying to engage the residents to determine our desired level of service. However, we think the goal should be to maintain our existing landscaping. Civic Mike wants to plan a walking tour with, quote, "Signs posted in maintained areas, have maps, and have the working group host an evening or weekend event where neighbors can meet and walk the signs together." Honestly, we don't understand what Civic Mike is trying to do. We are very aware of our exist- of our existing and established landscaping. It's been here for 25 years. We live in it, we walk in it, and we drive through it every day. What we really need is normal landscape maintenance. Sidewalk strips maintain, mowing, trimming, herbicide, fertilizing, and irrigation. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers on this item? June, welcome.
Good evening. Hello, everyone. Put this down so you can hear me. Um, yeah, we beat you up pretty bad over the situation that we find ourselves in. But I also want to thank you. I want to thank you for listening. I want to thank you for looking. And I want to thank you for caring. I really appreciate what Dave just mentioned, that city staff came out to look and see what we're going through. Um, I agree with, with Dave regarding Civic Mike and MD. We just want what we have maintained. We don't need new landscaping. We just need what's there fixed, maintained, trimmed, redebated. Just, it seems like a pretty simple process to us. Um, we've definitely seen improvement. Um, thank you for sending city staff, along with, uh, with the contractor, to, um, get more of the work done. We're certainly, we've got a lot more to go. We're certainly, we've got a lot more to go, no doubt about it, but there has been improvement, and we very much appreciate that. Again, I just want to tell you, we're beating you up because we care. We care about our community, we care about our city, and we just want things back to where they were. Lastly, I also wanted to mention the sheep and the goats. They showed up on time. There was no COVID. There was no overtime. They just came and did their job. Wow. You should really consider this throughout the city of Fairfield. I mean, those sheep and goats came in and cleaned up our Rolling Hills area in just a matter of days. It was pretty amazing, so I hope that that will continue. Lastly, I just want to mention and thank all of you that did come out for the Back to School Resource Fair. Chief of Police, if you're here, I see her everywhere, so she's doing a fabulous job. And I also want to acknowledge Elizabeth Dolby as well. We've reached out to her several times on issues that we've had in Rolling Hills, and she has been very, very responsive. So kudos to all the city staff. You guys are doing a great job, and thank you. Thank you for listening to us. Thank you for caring, and thank you for stopping, considering what we have said, and do vote to approve this tonight, because we do not want any interruption of service that we are currently having. Thank you.
Any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
No, and there are no hands raised online.
Okay, so I will open the public, close the public hearing now, and we'll take action. Have a motion to approve. That's moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second, please? A second by Councilman Tim. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Panduro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vicaro?
Yes.
And Mayor Price?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Now we go back to item number 17, please.
Yes. Item 17, Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Districts Oversight Committee. And our presenter is Ryan Pangeneben, Assistant Director of Public Works and Engineering.
Good evening, Mayor Price. Good evening, Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Vicaro, and members of the City Council. Ryan Pangeneben, I'm the Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer. So our discussion tonight is centered on the formation of a new landscaping, lighting, maintenance district oversight committee. Staff has conducted research on the subject and, based on our analysis, have prepared a few options for consideration in our seeking council's direction tonight. So as councils are aware, and you've heard from Chris, there's currently 16 landscape, lighting, maintenance districts. Each district has a distinct boundary area and development types. So for example, there's residential, commercial, business districts, industrial parks, and each property owner finances a different set of maintenance and repair, which range in amenities from street medians, improvements, planter strips, open space, and decorative streetlights. So these factors make it a bit difficult and nuanced for us to have a citywide committee focused on specific LLMD, a level of service or maintenance issues. So staff's recommendation is that the committee focus on reviewing the annual budgets, projected expenses, and assessment levels. So in this advisory capacity to council, the committee will improve transparency and financial oversight of these assessment districts. So Chris went into detail about the working groups, and I just want to go ahead and hammer that point home, is the committee should not be confused with these working groups being assembled as part of the public engagement process, so for several of these unfuted districts. This working group has a specific task related to public outreach of the assessment, engineering, and subsequent balloting process. So there are three options here presented for council's consideration, and there are two basic types of committees. Ad hoc, which is the option number one, and is formed to handle a specific one-time special project. These ad hoc committees tend to be informal in nature, and they do not follow the Brown Act requirements and meet on an as-needed basis. The second type is a standing committee, which adheres to these Brown Act requirements. And the major differences between options two and three are the number of members and the recurrence of meetings. So based on our research and outreach to other local agencies, we are recommending option number two, which is modeled very closely to our Measure P committee. This rationale is that semi-annually, we would meet and discuss how these budgets and financial processes are completed within the public works and financed departments. We meet in the beginning of the year during the spring, and at that time, we could coordinate with the committee, make any modifications, discuss any changes that are needed, so prior to the council's adoption in June and July of every fiscal year. And subsequently, we can meet with this committee in the fall to true up any actual expenses occurred in the prior fiscal year. So from a scheduling and implementation standpoint, pending council's direction here tonight, we'd anticipate returning with a formal resolution to establish this new committee in October and start advertising for the members to staff that committee late November. The first meeting, we would anticipate to be conducted in March of 2023. So that concludes my presentation, and I'll go back to this option slide here to help facilitate any discussions or questions or change in duties or roles, responsibilities that council may provide to staff.
Any comments, colleagues? Councilwoman Bertani, please.
Thank you for coming back to this and bringing us the information. Much appreciated. So with this committee, whichever committee we select, the committee would be reporting directly to the city council, correct?
That's correct. To be appointed by the council. Subsequently, I'd be looking for some direction, getting a subcommittee to go and comb through those applications and picking who the council would like to sit on that.
Yeah, I think that it's going to be imperative that whichever version of the committee we choose, I would like this committee to be reporting directly to the city council. You know, you recall that, you know, we're talking about this committee because of the mistakes that have been made by the city in these LLMDs. And we just, we have a lot of people who are engaged, very smart, very knowledgeable about these issues, and so we're looking for them to weigh in on these issues and help us, to help guide us so that nothing like this ever happens again. So as opposed to reporting to someone on the city staff, I'm asking that this committee report directly to the city council. So, yeah, Mr. City Attorney or City Manager, I don't know if there are any things that, you know, what the protocol is for that.
Yes.
But I think that this is an important enough issue that we need to hear directly firsthand from the folks who are on this committee. And hopefully, this committee will also be engaging, you know, with the community, with, you know, helping us to navigate these issues with the community. So not just a five people who are sitting in a room, talking to each other, but who are helping us outreach and really identify the issues that we need to be dealing with.
So I think in terms of the proposal, or at least what staff is recommending in following the Measure P committee, so Measure P committee meets, you know, at some frequency throughout the year, and they meet with staff, and in those staff conversations, what they are is the oversight body. Then they come back once a year. They are appointed, I believe, by the city council, and then they come back to city council once a year and produce an annual report for you, looking at the finances. And so as Ryan highlighted, this committee isn't necessarily on an ongoing basis, talking about the day-to-day maintenance that is done. That's a part of the 218 process that we're going through in many of the districts right now, and trying to engage with residents to determine what level of landscaping they want. This, at least what we understood from council's prior request to bring this for discussion, was more on the, you know, regular, routine, financial oversight of the way that these districts are operating. So annually, as the budgets are developed, based on the cost estimates for, you know, providing the services, as well as what we project for the revenues coming in, and the projections looking down the road, right, looking down the road a few years, so that we're projecting that, that's when we're engaging with this oversight committee. They then would be the ones that would report back to city council in a public meeting to give you a report on the status of the budget of the 16 LLMDs.
I'm not comfortable with a once-a-year meeting. No, not for this issue, because look at what, you know, these big time gaps have gotten us. Miscommunication, mistakes, that ultimately costs a lot of money. That, I mean, I agree, you know, with one of our speakers who said, you know, the residents really shouldn't even be having to pay these loans, but it's not their fault. It's, we dropped the ball. And we dropped the ball because I'm not blaming anyone. I'm saying, let's do it different this time, so this never happens again. And a report from a committee once a year, I don't feel comfortable with that. I want to know more frequently, like maybe quarterly, you know, what's going on in these LLMDs. And I know you're making a big distinction between the LLMD short-term issue and the 218 issue, but both of those issues are about where we live and about the fees that we pay. And there are no better eyes than those in these neighborhoods to help us, to guide us through what is really going on in our neighborhoods. So I'm looking for a more frequent, and this is just me, I mean, my colleagues will speak to this as well, but I'm looking for a more frequent engagement where we're, and it doesn't have to be a big official report, these are our eyes and ears in our communities, letting us know that this is what's going on in these LLMDs. With the maintenance, with the level of maintenance, with the satisfaction of maintenance, because this is what we're paying for, this is where we live, and we deserve answers. And I will reiterate, we have folks who are willing and able to do this. So I think that we need to seize the opportunity. Let's not keep doing the same thing and expecting something different to happen. Let's do something different. And this is a good start. But, you know, so I'm kind of leaning toward option two. I think that 16 members on a committee is, yeah, could be kind of unwieldy, maybe not five, maybe more than five, but I think 16 is too much. And so, and I would like to see a more frequent meeting and reporting directly to the city council. Those are my comments.
Comments, colleagues? Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Since this is not an advisory board but a committee, what I would recommend, and I agree with Ms. Bertani, is that you need more meetings, but what I would suggest is quarterly. And I would also suggest that somebody from each district, since we're now a district did, and you have to have an odd number, so you make it a seven-member committee. And I want to stress, an oversight committee, if it's, if what we're doing is like the Measure P committee, so we know where the money is being spent and how the money is being spent, I'm not looking for somebody to come in and say, hey, you need to cut the weeds over here, as opposed to, staff says, this is what we're going to do, this is the money allocated, this is the money we've collected, and how have you spent it? And then, and that's what Measure P committee does, you know, how many feet of roadway did they cut? So I'd like to see quarterly, and then a seven-member. It's going to take us a year or two to get out of this mess, and I think once it gets rolling and once it gets established, I think then we can put it on autopilot. So that's why I'm asking for quarterly meetings.
Councilmember Tim and Bertani, can I address an issue? Councilmember Bertani, you asked the question, and I think, I felt like you got the answer you wanted from the city manager, but I want to make sure that I give you clear direction. Councilmember Tim, you asked a question, and you made a comment that this would not be an advisory board but a committee. I feel compelled to point out that as the city council and staff seeking direction, you can give them whatever direction you want, and there are provisions in the municipal code for the creation of other commissions. The only commission that's required is a planning commission. But as you all know, you have the authority to create other commissions that would be advisory. So you're not limited to these three options. Now, I haven't done the research, but if you give direction to staff saying, you know, we do want an advisory board, you know, public works is going to kill me, but, you know, a lot of cities have public works commissions, and this would be something that would fall under the auspices of a public works commission, that does have hearings and, you know, pass resolutions recommending action by the council, and it's another layer of oversight. So you do have that ability. I just want to point out, because you've both asked a question, and when you stated that this is not an advisory board but a committee, I do want to let you know, you have that ability to give staff direction, saying, you know, we'd like to see what a commission would look like, or, you know, whatever you call it, you have the ability to do what you're both asking.
So my, so my next question would be is, because we want people to understand that we're serious about fixing this issue. This issue probably will take several years to unwind and then get back up to speed. I don't want to add another layer of bureaucracy. Can a commission then be abolished?
So I want to be careful, yes, the short answer is yes, but I also want to be very clear that at this point, staff is seeking direction, so I have not done a deep dive into the formation of new commissions and how to start them and unwind them. So I think at this point, the safest thing would be you give council or the staff whatever direction, you know, your hopes and dreams, and then we will go and do the work for you and tell you what's legal, what's not. But I do know from the municipal code and general law cities that, you know, you can have, again, my fellow staff is going to kill me, but, you know, Berkeley has like 20 commissions.
Well, and that's what I want to avoid, and I'm comfortable, if we're just playing the verbiage game, advisory or a commission, standing in the back, I'm looking at David and June, is I want them, their neighbors, and everybody else that lives in the city to understand that there will be oversight, I think probably is the best term I could use. We have X amount of dollars, this is what we charge the residents, this is where the money is being spent. And I think if we take a person from each district, they can say, yeah, but in my district, we're lacking this, and they can bring that information to us, and they can bring it to us timely, and that's why I recommend quarterly, because like I said, this issue took, what, five, 10 years to get where we are today, and now we're trying to unwind it. So Pam, are you comfortable with seven and four, four quarterly meetings?
I, I-
We can make it advisory. The information's going to be the same. I just don't want to get bogged down, you got to have a meeting, you got to have a resolution, because that just adds time and stress.
Yeah, in my initial comments, I asked for quarterly, so we're in agreement there. I think that seven is a good number, one for each district. But just for a point of clarification, Mr. City Attorney, what is the difference between a commission and a committee? Because, and I ask that in this context, this group of people of seven, I want to report directly to the city council. Now, they can have engagement with staff and, you know, get information, but I want them to speak directly to us, so that we can ask them questions about what their oversight of these issues. So which nomenclature describes what I just asked for?
A commission. And really, to answer your question, the difference between a committee and a commission really is not, the term itself doesn't guide what it is. It is what you all do to empower it. Whatever authority you give that group is going to kind of define what it is called. Like, so for example, the Measure P committee is called Measure B committee because under Measure P, it said you shall form a committee that shall oversee Measure P, so you call it a committee. If you form an advisory body that, you know, holds meetings and then advises the city, under the municipal code, those are commissions. But, you know, I think, what I would advise council at this point is not to get bogged into the language of what you're going to call it. I think the safer thing is to tell staff what you want, we'll go find out what, how we can legally form it, and if we can't legally form it, we, you know, we'll let you know that. Obviously, staff will run like the costs, the staffing, you know, time, all that, and then bring it back to you, and then we'll worry about what to call it.
Okay. So, yeah, so just for my final point of clarification, I'm looking at a modified option two. Like Chuck said, with seven members, one from each district, and then with quarterly meetings. And frankly, with the ability to meet more than that, if deemed necessary. But at least, at a minimum, quarterly meetings. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
Yeah, and I agree that it should be quarterly. You know, one thing that, and the reason why I think it's important to be in districts, we have six districts too, so maybe, I don't know, six or seven, I mean, it just doesn't matter. The point, but, you know, the point is, like, we do have, like, you know, June and David, you guys come and talk to our meetings, and so do other people from other districts, but there's people out there that don't. And I think it's really important that we hear from everybody in the city, because there's a lot of people out there that, you know, are voiceless and don't have the voice, and their areas need the help too. You know, and that's my concern. Now, you guys are great, I mean, you support your area, I get that. Paradise Valley, same thing, but there's other areas in the city that need the comment-
Paradise Valley, same thing, but there's other areas in the city that need to comment and need to say, hey, you know, what about us? How come, you know, how come we're not getting the assistance that we need? So I think it's really, really important that we do have representation from every district in the city. So I agree with, I agree with my, um, you know, my fellow council people, that I think it does need to be a quarterly, and I'm really stressing that we need to get representation from every, everyone. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Panduro, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So I agree with my colleagues with regards to the number and the quarterly meeting and the representation aspect. Because I was going to ask you, what did, where did you get the five, the five from? And then, I know, I understand where the seven's coming from, but where was a five coming from?
That's a, that's basically the model from the Measure P. So it would be an odd number I'd be looking for, if there was some type of discussion that needed.
Sure.
So seven, I think, would be the direction.
And so, along the lines of representation, I understand we're saying, you know, one person from each district. Well, my district doesn't have any, any LLMDs. So my suggestion, I know we're not, we're not supposed to get bogged down in the name calling or anything, because right now, we're talking about the LLMD Oversight Committee, so I'm putting it out there to maybe consider doing an actual public works commission. Because, like I said, my district does not have LLMDs. We don't have, and it's very different than the outskirts of town and the newer, the newer areas of town, so.
Comments, colleagues?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, please, Councilwoman Moy, please.
Thank you. Councilwoman Panduro just said what I've been thinking all along here, is that, yes, there are parts of Fairfield that do not have LLMDs. And a lot of times, those go in, goes with older neighborhoods and what are our underrepresented neighborhoods. For instance, I was in a, in an area today, helping a homeless woman and her baby who were out and sick in the heat. That area needs representation as well. And I know that Doris does represent one area that has no LLMDs, just like she said. So I believe that we should go ahead and put a commission together. It has more teeth, and, yes, it may take a little more time, but it's going to be more effective than what we're trying to do, which is representation throughout the city and ensuring that there's oversight. And as, as Vice Mayor Vaccaro said, we're giving representation to every area of the city. We can't leave ci, other, we just can't leave the parts out. We cannot forget about people who just can't make it to a meeting, don't have LLMDs, you know? It's, it's important that we go for a commission, I think. And so I would lean that way. I do think quarterly meetings are good, and I think that we should have seven, and each of us in our different districts could appoint somebody, and then the mayor could appoint somebody. I think that that's the way it should roll, and to get it done sooner than later, but I think it should come back to us as a commission item. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bertoni, again, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so, yeah, there are, there are parts of the city that do not have LLMDs, but every part of the city has landscape, lighting, and maintenance issues, right? So, I mean, we, we need representation from each one of our districts. It, even if they don't have a official legal LLMD, they still face these issues, and maybe even more so than some of the districts that do have official LLMDs. So I would think that their voice at the table from those districts would be well-received and, you know, have an impact on the discussions and, and maybe, you know, result in some improvements in some of those areas that could use such improvements. So I, I, again, I think, I, I, you know, I think I heard, you know, maybe have a Parks and Rec Commission? That is not what I'm asking for. That's a different animal. This is for landscape, lighting, and maintenance district issues, and man, landscape, lighting, and maintenance issues from a group of seven who will report directly to the city council so that the, the city council can take duly actions when necessary to deal with issues. I think that adding a layer of, you know, reporting to the city and then the city report, that's not, that's not what I'm recommending. I want to hear from the actual people, from the, from the community, from this committee of seven, reporting the issues as they see them directly to the city council so that we can take action swiftly.
Any other council comments?
Just that I, I would second what Councilwoman Bertoni just said.
Okay. And before we take action, are there any folks in the public who'd like to speak on this item? June, if you would, please.
Just real quickly. I just want you to know, we care about the entire city. We care about the entire city. We're here speaking on Rolling Hills, because that's where we live, but we drive the entire city. And I agree, there's many areas throughout the city that need a lot of work. And whoever's on the committee, I hope that they care about the entire city, because I certainly do. Thank you.
So will you state your motion again, please, and then we'll take action? Oh, I'm sorry. Scott, you want to comment?
No, I just, um, I'll go either way you guys want, but, Mr. City Attorney, I learned more about LLMDs than I think I ever wanted to know. But they're not required, are they?
Uh, no, there's no provision under law that requires a city to have-
So if they don't like what we're doing, they can dissolve it and do their own?
Well, that's up to you on what you want-
No, I'm just saying, I, again, me and Doris are in an area where this doesn't, isn't near as pressing of an issue, but-
Yeah. I would only call, clarify that you said they can dissolve it, I think it's up to the council-
Or the city, I, yeah, that's what I meant.
But otherwise-
I'm good, I'm good with how you guys want to go.
Want to state your motion again, please, and we'll take action?
Sure.
Anybody else have a comment?
June, do you have another comment?
Actually, he had raised his hand.
Okay, come, come on, come on up. I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, is that okay? Okay.
We want to take our time and get it right.
Yeah, thanks. Mike Zeiss, I, I, Michael Zeiss, I'm a resident of Sassoon City. Just real quick, Sassoon's wrestling with all these same issues. Love the idea of having representation from every part of your city. In Sassoon, we found it difficult to get people to step up for some portions of Sassoon. Just something you might consider, like, what if that happens? That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, so my motion is that the city council recommend a modified option two, where we have a seven-member committee with one member representing each district, and then a seventh member, maybe at large, that will meet quarterly and report directly to the city council on a quarterly basis.
Can we have a second to that motion, please? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bertoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Panduro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vaccaro?
Yes.
And Mayor Price.
Yes. Carriers unanimously, thank you very much. We turn then to item number eighteen, please.
Item eighteen, Resolutions 2022-210 to 2022-213 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, authorizing a loan and budget transfer from the Intergovernmental Loan Fund to Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District Number One, Gateway District Number Three, Waterman Highlands, District Number Three, Pepper Tree, and District Number Twelve, Downtown Business District for Landscape Maintenance Services through the fiscal year 2022 to 2023, and authorizing an update to the fiscal year 2022 to 2023 budget. And our presenter is Chris Lewis, Public Works Management Analyst.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we are here to provide you with the results of the recent community engagement with LLMDs, one Gateway, three Waterman Highlands, six Pepper Tree, and twelve the Downtown Business District, and to also receive your direction with regard to the issuance of the loans for these districts to supplement their fiscal year 2223 assessments. So on April nineteenth, staff informed council that LLMD number one was projected to have an approximate $170,000 deficit, and LLMDs three and six were projected to have a $40,000 deficit in each district in fiscal year 2223 if services were provided at the same level as previous fiscal years. So council directed staff to engage those property owners in those districts to offer them the same type of general fund loan we offered to District Seven, Eleven, and Thirteen. And so in, in the months of May through July, staff engaged these communities through mailed flyers, an online survey, the Civic Mike website, and the residential communities had a live virtual town hall meeting, and a Facebook ad was ran in their area. LLMD number twelve is on a little bit of a different timeline, and much shorter timeline than the other three LLMDs due to the timing of when the projected deficit was discovered in this district. So on July fifth, staff informed council of the approximate $40,000 deficit in this district, and council again directed staff to engage those, that community and offer the same type of loan. So we only had about one month to engage this community through mailed flyers, an online survey, the Civic Mike website, and a pre-recorded online presentation. And of course, city staff, NBS, and Civic Mike was on hand the entire time to speak with property owners and answer any of their questions. Before I jump to the results of the community engagement, I'd just like to give you an update on the loan amounts that have been recalculated. We did those in the middle of the year, which is sort of unusual, to try to project out for the next year, in terms of these loans. So the good news is, as you can see by this chart, that for each district, except for number twelve, all the loan amounts have decreased, and the current loan amount being requested today is $261,000, as shown on this chart. On the next few slides, I'll go over the results to questions number six and seven of the survey only. There were sixteen questions, and a copy of that is in your packet. Some of them are just general questions, and a lot of them were looking ahead to fiscal year 2324. You'll notice that a couple of the questions are omitted from that, from your packet, just because they have personally identifiable information. So I will speak to questions six and seven. Question six asked if they supported the loan, and question seven basically asked if they were willing to pay a higher assessment to repay that loan. Unfortunately, we did not receive any responses from anyone in LLMD number one Gateway, so I'll be reporting on Districts Three, Six, and Twelve tonight. Of the ten people who took the survey in the Waterman District, sixty percent of respondents either strongly agreed or agreed with both receiving the loan and repaying the loan over five years, while thirty percent of respondents either disagreed or strongly disagreed with those statements. In the Pepper Tree District, we had four people take the survey. Fifty percent of those respondents either strongly agreed or agreed with both receiving the loan and repaying the loan, while twenty-five percent of respondents either disagreed or strongly disagreed with just receiving the loan, that's question number six, and fifty percent of respondents either disagreed or strongly disagreed with repaying the loan, and that was question number seven. Finally, LLMD twelve in the downtown area, we had nine people from this district take the survey. Thirty-three percent of respondents either strongly agreed or agreed with receiving the loan, while fifty-five percent of respondents disagreed or strongly disagreed with that question number six. And twenty-two percent of respondents either strongly agreed or agreed with repaying the loan, while sixty-six percent of respondents either disagreed or strongly disagreed with repaying the loan. Just a few final notes before I ask for council's direction. If the loans are approved by, by the resolutions before you tonight, staff will work to transfer the funds immediately, and there would be no disruption in services to any of these districts. And each district would make the, would repay these loans through assessments, which would be available either as a result of the increased assessment, as we go through this Prop 218 process, or as a result through further reduction of services if the, the Prop 218 process is not, excuse me, the, the ballot is not passed for increased assessments. However, if the loans are not approved today, services in each district would have to be reduced immediately in order to avoid that deficit in this current fiscal year 2223. But regardless of any of the decision that's being made tonight, the city will still conduct that focused community engagement and Prop 218 process in these districts, which will inform the fiscal year 2324 assessments and engineers' reports and, and those operations beyond. So I will conclude just by asking for council's direction regarding the issuance of these loans, which total $261,000, which would be dispersed as follows there on the slide. Thank you.
Comments or questions? Okay. Entertainer motion, is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on this item?
No, I have several for item nineteen, but none on item eighteen.
Okay. So entertain a motion to approve. Tim, go ahead, please. It's been moved by you, is there a second? Councilwoman Bertoni, roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bertoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Panduro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vaccaro?
Yes.
And Mayor Price.
Motion carriers unanimously, thank you very much. We turn then to item number nineteen, please.
Item nineteen, Resolution 2022-214 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute an indemnification agreement between Solano County and the City of Fairfield, and Resolution 2022-215 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute a potable water service agreement between Solano Irrigation District and the City of Fairfield for the Middle Green Valley specific plan area. And our presenter is Michael Heather, our Assistant Public Works Director of Utilities.
Good evening, Michael.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Fairfield City Council members, Michael Heather, Assistant Public Works Director for the City of Fairfield Utilities Division, Public Works Utilities Division. This specific item before you tonight seeks approval of two separate but related resolutions regarding the city's role in wheeling water to Solano Irrigation District for the Middle Green Valley Project. So as I see it, tonight's presentation seeks to provide answers to four basic questions. First, I'll briefly describe the Middle Green Valley Project, but I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on it. Second, I'll summarize efforts to date since receiving policy direction back in February of this year. Third, I'll describe a few benefits to the city's water system, and finally, how I'll line next steps if the resolutions are approved. So it's worth noting, noting where the Middle Green Valley Specific Plan Area is located as part of this discussion, which is why I have the location map here. But if folks want more information regarding the project, they can visit the county's webpage that contains all the specific plan content. The left-hand side contains a region map showing the plan area in the center, with a blow-up of the specific plan area in the vicinity map on the right-hand side. The proposed project is located in the unincorporated portion of Lower Green Valley in western Solano County and falls within a specific plan area designated by the county as the Middle Green Valley Specific Plan Area. This specific plan area is situated just north of the city's boundary, near Vintage Valley, the lakes, east ridge, with the southerly and easterly lines of the plan area coinciding with the City of Fairfield city limits. As it relates to the Fairfield Municipal Utility and the Water Wheeling Agreement, the Middle Green Valley Project is situated wholly within the Solano Irrigation District's water service area. As part of this agreement before you tonight, it stipulates that SID would be our customer, and our ownership of physical infrastructure would end at the meter. So last December, the county made a formal request to identify possible next steps in working with the city on, on a potential wheeling agreement. A couple months later, council directed city staff to begin working with the Solano Irrigation District in drafting up a wheeling agreement between the city and the district. And after reaching out to the district, later in May, Solano Irrigation District's board authorized their staff to negotiate an agreement with the city. The district engineer and I worked up on drafting up an agreement in June, and finally in July, the city and county came to an agreement regarding the county's indemnification of the city in the event that we're pulled into litigation regarding the Middle Green Valley. So some of the operational benefits to having additional demands within the specific portion of our water system include: Demands will help increase turnover within our east ridge reservoir. Additional connections and demands always help with maintaining and a consistent water supply within the distribution system. And in regards to low margin- And in regards to low marginal costs, the district is expected to pay all costs associated with construction of all infrastructure, consumption, which is our volumetric fee, as well as our connection fees. I will qualify this by stating that in this case, SID is providing the water supply, so no water supply to the Middle Green Valley Project will come out of the city's water portfolio. The remainder of any marginal cost would involve treating and storage, which SID would pay, but the city will continue to operate regardless of the Middle Green Valley Project. And finally, under this agreement, the city acts as a wholesaler and will have no obligations for operations, maintenance, billing, or otherwise for any water services downstream So in summary, adoption of both resolutions will authorize the mayor and city manager to execute a water supply agreement with the Solano Irrigation District, as well as ensure the city is included as part of the county's indemnification should the city be named as part of any litigation. Once executed, we'll begin working with the district to develop engineering plans for construction of the vault meters and piping that's specific to metering water to the district. And city staff would continue to respond and work with the county to advance any efforts with their development agreement. So without diminishing the importance of all the planning and environmental aspects associated with the Middle Green Valley Project, I'll summarize by stating that with regard to this wheeling agreement, without being for or against the Middle Green Valley Project, it is fair to state that we aren't doing anything groundbreaking or innovative, as this agreement is modeled after a similar wheeling agreement that we have in place with the Solano Irrigation District. And as it pertains to proposed services and demands within this portion of the city's system, it's difficult to discount the operational benefits to the water system. So with that, I'll pause here for questions.
Comments or questions from staff? Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
Yeah, I think we should take comments.
Yeah, I will in a second here. Any comments at this point? Okay, I know that we're going to have some public comments. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Yes, Dwayne Crom, to be followed by Michael Zeiss.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Dwayne Crom with the Solano County Orderly Growth Committee. So today, you probably haven't read it, it was a lot of documents, but you received a long letter from our attorneys again. I think this is the second one this year pointing out that what you're doing is not allowed under the city's general plan, under the California Planning laws. So we have very serious concerns about the city's activities in this, in this direction, where you're clearly violating your general plan. So in my head, it's like, what's in it for the city? The points that the speaker just made, there's 400 houses, there's very marginal amounts of water being delivered, but what it does is it opens up city services being delivered into unincorporated Solano County. Green Valley today, perhaps Sassoon Valley tomorrow. So I ask myself, what's, again, what's in it for the residents of the City of Fairfield? I can't come up with, with good reasons why you're putting the risk of having sprawling development into our valleys by starting this process. But when I did further research, I got why several of you, I think, have good reasons to want to do this. I came up with roughly $43,000 worth of reasons. And this is painful to do, but the developers of this project, of the Middle Green Valley Project, have made significant campaign contributions to Councilmember Tonison, Councilmember Vicaro, and really big contributions to Councilmember Tim and his run for Board Supervisors. Let me just point out Councilman Tim's contributions. $35,000 from simply the families that own and have an interest in getting this development done. That's 30% of the contributions to Councilman Tim's run for the Board Supervisors. That's pretty good incentive to want to vote for a project. I get that. I don't get being so in bed with a developer that you take that much money and then be up here on the stage making a vote to support a project development that doesn't benefit the citizens of Fairfield. It disappoints me greatly to see you guys doing this. And I hope that there's a strike of lightning that causes you to rethink your commitment to this project, but we urge you to not support providing water to the Middle Green Project, Middle Green Valley Project. I do encourage you to adopt the indemnification agreement, because I think you're looking at trouble. Good evening.
Next speaker, Michael Zeiss, to be followed by Marilyn Farley.
Do I need to push any button, or the microphone's active? Okay, fantastic, thanks. Mike Zeiss again from Sassoon City, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First of all, genuinely want to express my admiration for a very thoughtful, functional city council meeting, something we don't always see in Sassoon City. Seriously, I was impressed with the level of how informed you were and how thoughtful you were. Nonetheless, I'm not here to mince words. I'm a homeowner in Sassoon City, so I'm your neighbor, and the decisions you make tonight affect not only Fairfield, but also your neighbors. So as your neighbor, I'm here to ask you to protect farmland in Sassoon Valley, and I'm asking you to respect the rule of law. In other words, vote no on this proposal to provide water outside of Fairfield city limits. This proposal fails to respect the rule of law. The current law of the land is Fairfield's general plan. The general plan says, quote, "Any urban development requiring basic municipal services shall occur only within the incorporated city," close quote. Pretty straightforward. That's general plan policy LU 3.1. The housing development being proposed is 400 units. That meets the definition of urban development, and it is located outside of the incorporated city. Therefore, please respect the rule of law and vote no. As you move forward on amending your general plan, it's essential that you protect Sassoon Valley. Farms in Sassoon Valley provide all of us with produce, wine, and beauty. But more than that, the farmland plays a major role in protecting our climate. In your general plan revision, one of your five goals is, quote, "Promoting climate resilience and reducing greenhouse gas emissions," close quote. Just keep in mind this quote from your neighbors in Yolo County from their climate action plan, quote, "Each acre of agriculture in open space conserved saves nearly 100 times the amount of greenhouse gas emissions that will result if the land were converted to urban use," close quote. Again, that calculation's from your neighbor, Yolo County. Saving 100 times the greenhouse gases. To achieve your climate goals, probably the single most important thing you could do is preserving Sassoon Valley agriculture. So in summary, when you act locally, please think globally. Please protect the climate and protect the rule of law, both for yourselves and your neighbors. Say no to urban development within Sassoon Valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marilyn Farley, to be followed by Roger Merrill.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, and citizens of Fairfield. I'm also speaking for Orderly Growth Committee tonight. It's existed since 1984 with the goal of protecting Solano County's ag and open-spaced lands and directing growth to our cities. Solano still has separators between our seven cities. We have a strong agricultural sector and increasingly successful Sassoon Valley. These are quality-of-life issues if we want vibrant cities and beautiful surroundings. Orderly Growth supported the voter-approved general plan of the county in 2008 that designated Middle Green Valley specific plan. In 2010, Orderly Growth made written in oral comments about the plan, lauding the effort and the protection of 1,500 acres of ag land in exchange for development of clustered housing. At the same time, Orderly Growth noted, there are numerous shortcomings that must still be addressed before we can consider supporting this plan. And more specifically, why has there been no analysis of the constraints of Measure L? As your staff report pointed out, Measure L has expired, but Fairfield's general plan, as Mike Zeiss just said, is in full force and includes the prohibition on providing urban services outside the city limits. The staff would have you think water is not an urban service. The Orderly Growth Committee has sued the county twice over this matter and won both times, even after the county insisted on a new judge being appointed. The staff would have you believe that Blue Ridge Oaks, which receives city water, is the model for this deal. Blue Ridge Oaks had a failing water system, which raised health and safety concerns for existing residents. This is a different matter. Water is being served to a brand-new development. This sets a bad precedent. The agreement with Solano Irrigation District anticipates extension of water service even further. Paragraph eight only prohibits Sid from expanding potable water service beyond the Middle Green Valley specific plan unless Fairfield approves it. Combine this with Fairfield's refusal to extend the voter protections of the urban growth boundary and the new general plan proposals to annex significant parts of the Sassoon Valley, and you have a recipe for unfettered sprawl. Orderly Growth was negotiating with the city, as you know, to accept delivery of water for this project in return for a guarantee of council support for a new voter-approved urban growth boundary that stayed out of the Sassoon Valley and avoided any further encroachment on Travis Air Force Base. These negotiations came to a sudden and unexplained halt. Sadly, I think we know where this council is headed.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Roger Merrill, to be followed by Nora Dezon.
My name is Roger Merrill. I know some of you, I don't know all of you. I'm a neighbor also. I live in Green Valley. I'm here this evening representing the Green Valley Landowners Association, which has existed since 1972, so for 49, no, 50 years now. We've been doing very good work on behalf of the residents in Upper Green Valley, Gordon Valley, et cetera. I want to put this in context with two short stories about myself. When I was a young man, my father, I grew up in Berkeley, my father was a big boater, fisherman out in the bay, and he bought a Hunter boat, which was made in the Sassoon Boatworks. And we came out to get a new engine or some kind of thing, and I came with him, and I saw this place for the first time. And I asked my dad, what is this place? And he said, well, this is Sassoon Valley and all this. And we drove around out in the marsh, went up in the mountains. What a beautiful area. Well, 40 years later, I moved here, I've lived here for 15 years, but from a very early age, I knew this was a very beautiful area. Two, and this is important for context, when I was a very young boy, my grandfather from Montana would sit down with me, and he asked me one day, he said, what's the most important resource in the Western US? And I said, young guy, I said, gold. And he said, no. Silver, no. Land, no. Cattle, no. And he said, it's water. Don't forget, it's always about water. So I'm talking to you tonight about the water and the situation that the residents of Green Valley face. You know, it may be that in the next couple of years, we have to get potable domestic water from other than Vallejo. Vallejo could contract with Sid, Vallejo could contract with Fairfield. So the possibility, well, why? How about the water treatment plant being beyond its current useful life, supplying about 750,000 gallons a day to 810 residents? I mean, the disaster is on the horizon for regional water complexity. It's a real challenge. And frankly, Fairfield is part of the solution, and so you have to keep your options open. So when we hear demands from opponents that you should never do something again if you approve this, we can't go along with that. You'll truncate our options. It may be that our water supplier in the future is the City of Fairfield. There wouldn't be any new development in Upper Green Valley, but you could be our water provider. So we don't like it when we hear that people are ignoring unintended consequences of making this type of decision. And so we encourage you to keep an open mind about that. Setting a precedent that would limit our options is fairly unacceptable to us in Upper Green Valley. The lakes water system, part of the district of Vallejo. So we respectfully request you not take any actions after your vote tonight to limit rational regional water options for the future that could very easily include Fairfield. Okay? Thank you very much. Open any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Nora Dezon, to be followed by Anthony Russo. And there is one person online as well.
Good evening, Mayor Price and city councilmembers. You've heard a lot already about the reasons why there should be consideration of this being a precedent, and perhaps you are opening the door to development, urban-type development in the county. That's our concern, and I'm talking about the residents of Cordelia and Lower Green Valley. We're already concerned about roads, you know, just infrastructure, and we've got 400 homes coming. I understand that they've gone through a long process and really wouldn't have anything to say if it was water from another source, but this is from the city. And so what does this mean? Does this mean that we're going to be doing this for other developments too? This is quite concerning. So I really hope you will think about the impact that it might have, and I understand that other people who have more expensive water sources would like to have the same deal. So very concerning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anthony Russo.
Good evening, Mayor Price, members of the city council. My name is Anthony Russo. Middle Green Valley is a county-sponsored plan that was approved by a public vote in 2008, including 70% of residents in Fairfield. About 1,500 acres are to be placed in a permanent agricultural easement. In return, the project is allowed to construct 390 new homes in clustered neighborhoods surrounded by permanent agriculture. Middle Green Valley is a rural development. SID is the current potable water supplier to Middle Green Valley, but since drinking water standards were tightened, SID has not provided potable water to Green Valley mainly due to the cost of treating it. The same issue led to the Blue Ridge Oaks agreement in 2002. This agreement mimics that one. I read Orderly Growth's letter today very carefully. It completely misstates the relevant general plan policy. The actual policy states, "What is urban shall be municipal, and what is rural shall be within the county." By definition, rural development is the county. And urban development, requiring basic municipal services, shall occur within the incorporated city. While Measure L set the urban limit line, the city council does not need to amend that urban limit line, because this contract is not inconsistent with this policy in any way, shape, or form. The policy dates all the way back to the 1970s general plan. The Blue Ridge Oaks agreement was approved 30 years later. Blue Ridge Oaks was a rural development, Middle Green Valley is a rural development. Neither are urban. The legal rulings in Orderly Growth's letter and mentioned tonight never outlawed SID as the potable water supplier under an inter-agency water agreement with Fairfield. I repeat, never. That letter is mixing apples with airplane parts. To their credit, Orderly Growth has publicly supported Middle Green Valley several times. And to be frank, I don't believe their objections are about Middle Green Valley. As Mr. Batson said earlier, it's about future general plan revisions that might allow for additional growth in Sassoon Valley. Today, there are many county residents who can't drink the water out of their taps, and others who make the equivalent of mortgage payments for theirs. The city and county can cooperate to solve some of these issues in ways that don't trigger uncontrolled growth. Tonight, that future growth issue is not before you. Tonight, that future growth issue is not before you, nor is growth in the county something the city regulates. You are dealing with one thing: authorizing Fairfield to treat SID's water, providing Fairfield an increment of income for doing so and helping your water system, and allowing an iconic project that most everyone seems to want to move forward with water served by SID. Your city attorneys, both past and present, and city staff agree that Fairfield can do this under the language of your existing and longstanding general plan policies.
Anthony, would you conclude, please?
County council agrees. The county will indemnify you if you're sued, and we're going to indemnify the county if that happens, too. I hope you approve this agreement. It's time to move it. I think you'll be proud with what you'd see in the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Brian, could you bring the person online that has his or her hand raised?
Next speaker is Beth Shoenberger. You have three minutes.
Oh, thank you, Valeria.
Good evening, mayor, council, and staff. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. My name is Beth Shoenberger, and I'm the water director for the city of Vallejo. We appreciate our working relationship with the city of Fairfield over many years, especially over the seventy-three years that we have been the drinking water supplier for Travis Air Force Base. Having worked with the city for decades, this matter before you this evening offers another opportunity to do so. For over a hundred years, the city of Vallejo's drinking water system, as Roger Merrill mentioned, in the unincorporated county, has served the area addressed in this agenda item. We have infrastructure in the area to allow us to serve the development and opportunities to increase water supply to address fire suppression in light of the new normal of the persistent wildfires. Vallejo, in fact, also has a joint exercise of powers agreement with Solano County as the exclusive potable water purveyor in this area. Without the addition of this development in Vallejo's system, many water users also will be impacted with high rates. Vallejo should have been included before this decision point was reached, and as Roger Merrill said, there are regional water supply opportunities to be discussed. So the city requests that Fairfield delay consideration of this decision until all parties can sit down and talk. The city would like to have a discussion at this point rather than the creation of an adversarial situation, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, I see there's one more hand raised. Is there an additional speaker? Oh, no. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Bring it back now for our council discussion in action, please.
Sure, I'll go first. I think we are being a good neighbor if we allow this water to be treated. I was in support of this last time. I'll be in support of this this time. I don't know the ins and outs of the Vallejo water and how long that's going to last or what the condition of it is, but these are our neighbors. We have the water, or we have the ability to treat the water, and I'll be voting yes on this tonight.
Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all speakers, everyone who spoke. I respect everybody's opinion in this matter. Mr. Crom, I do don't, I don't really think it pains you to say what you said. I think you enjoyed saying what you said, and that's fine. Personal attacks are what they are. But I do think that, I find it interesting that people that don't live in the county don't agree with Green Valley landowners that do live in the county that would like to see this because it could be something that might benefit them in the future, not a future development, the people who live there now. So I just don't see the connection there. So, yeah, I would be supporting this.
Councilman Tim, please.
Thank you. You know, I was going to just sit here and listen, and like the vice mayor says, everybody has an interest in this. And the interest has been going on since 2008, probably even before that. Mr. Crom, your comments were offensive, but I understand it's hardball politics. I get it. But what I don't understand is, this is a county issue. It was a specific part of their general plan. It was put to the voters. The voters approved this. Four hundred homes, it was approved. So we had these same issues two or three years ago over sewer. Like the vice mayor said, you know, what makes us different than a third-world country is we put our sewage in a pipe and not in the ground. So now we're here back over water. Now, hearing the caller from the city of Vallejo tonight, "If you live in Green Valley and you get city of Vallejo water, you take a Navy shower." City of Vallejo water is very expensive. Now, I'm sure the city of Vallejo could probably supply water to Middle Green Valley. I guess that's what they want to do. Ms. Nora Dezon says, "Don't give them city of Fairfield water." This is not city of Fairfield water. We're treating city, we're treating SID water, and we're probably going to mark it up, what, one hundred and twenty-five? Probably one hundred and twenty-five. We're not going to lose money on the deal, right?
No.
Thank you. So then you get Green Valley landowners. People have been at war, I've lived here fifty years. Folks in the valley have been at war for fifty years. And finally, everybody came together within the last, eh, fifteen years or so, and the wars were over, and this was agreed upon. So to come back and keep trying to throw roadblocks in front of us or in front of the process, I get it because that is politics. Personal comments and attacks aside, I understand that, too. But when is enough enough? You say we were in negotiations with you. Negotiations didn't go the way you wanted them to go, and now all of a sudden, we get letters from your attorney. I understand that, too. But I join Mr. Tonason and Rick, I didn't hear what your druthers were, but I support this. It is time to end this. If your issue is you are worried about the city going into Green Valley, that's a separate, and a good issue to be concerned about, but it's a separate issue. And that's not why we're up here tonight. I would imagine our general plan, we have now stretched it out, again, like LLMDs, we want to get it right. We're going, we hear from everybody, and we will continue to hear. And my guess is that we won't even see it when I'm gone off the council because you know that I'm leaving at the end of the year. So if you're angry or you don't want to provide a service, just tell us the truth. Say, "We don't want them," or "We don't like the developer," we don't like whatever it is. But don't be disingenuous and don't be offensive and try to besmirch our reputations over thirty-five thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars because, or a dollar, right? Because that's what it was. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, colleagues? Councilwoman Bertone, please.
Thank you. So the phrase that's sticking with me is "the voters approved this." When did the voters approve this?
Are you asking me?
Okay, so the voters approved this in 2008. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. So is this, is this? Comments from the crowd? Okay. So the voters approved this in 2008. My next question is, so does that mean that this is consistent with the Sassoon Valley strategic plan dated February 2010?
I know we have members from county of Solano here, but I don't believe this has any issue with Sassoon Valley strategic plan.
Well, let me preface my questions with, I'm concerned about maintaining Sassoon Valley as a pristine, as what it's designated in the Sassoon Valley strategic plan. So my concerns come from that direction. And kind of in light of, you know, we've heard Green Valley residents come to meetings for years, you know, talking about the stress and impact of insufficient services to service the existing homes and the lack of infrastructure and the traffic problems and the, you know, the limitations in schools. So I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, how, if you can help me understand how those issues will be addressed with this particular project.
I can do that.
Because, David, you're looking perplexed.
Yeah, I can do that. Councilmember Tim, I think, has a comment.
Okay, so Pam, this is an approved project. The houses are coming. So right now, the only thing that we're talking about is where are they going to get their water from? SID is going to provide it, and we're going to treat it? Or does it come from the city of Vallejo? This is, this is approved. I mean, this, we have nothing to say about, about this project coming, whether it impacts our traffic. This is in the, in the general plan from Solano County, and inside the general plan is a specific plan for Middle Green Valley.
And so, so I think that what I'm trying to say is, our action tonight will, I hear concern that our action tonight will have a precedential effect on opening the floodgates of development in areas that, like Green Valley, which is already stressed for adequate services and infrastructure, and then Sassoon Valley, which I hope we can all agree, has been a complete jewel to this community and one that we want to maintain as, you know, an agricultural pristine area where they're doing what they're doing, and they're doing it very well.
Right.
Very well. So will our, will our decision on this tonight impact or have precedential value in, you know, promoting future development in kind of an unlimited form in those areas that I'm concerned about?
Right. And I would say that that is a valid concern. It's a valid concern from them because they're thinking, if you're giving them treated water, who else are you going to give it to? But that's, that's not what this is. So we gave Blue Ridge Oaks, which is off Lyons Road, we gave them treated water. How many years ago? Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen? Longer than that, twenty years ago? We do the exact same thing there. Right? So there are, so there are safeguards in place, and by that I mean, for us to, for us, for the city to say, "We're going to go into Sassoon Valley," right? That would have to be the general plan, obviously, and the urban limit line. That are, that is what is being discussed today, probably, and we started, what, eight? Oh, no, probably a year ago, I would assume, and will continue. So like I said, they're valid, their, their concerns are valid if you think, because you give somebody water or sewer, that we're just going to keep connecting. But there's safeguards in place to make sure that doesn't happen. And I haven't heard anything from this council that says we're going to go into Sassoon Valley. You hear it all the time when they say it creates a precedence. People talk. You know, it's just like you get around with your neighbors and say, "Oh, man, the city is coming into the valley." No, no, we haven't said that. We trashed the whole plan. So all this deals with is, do we treat water that is SID water and give it to them? Because this housing development is coming.
If I may interrupt for just a moment, James Beasik is here from the county, and he would like to speak.
Oh, good, somebody from the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Beasik, Assistant Director of Resource Management. And just a point of clarity, the approved project was the Green Valley specific plan, not the Sassoon Valley specific plan. So I think when your, your question was, what was the approved project? The approved project was the Green Valley specific plan. Hopefully, that helps provide some clarity for...
And I understand that distinction.
Yes.
My point, which I may not have made very artfully, is that I am concerned about development in the Sassoon Valley. And I'm saying that the Sassoon Valley strategic plan is the reason why. It's very well done, very well articulated, and makes very, a very good argument as to why Sassoon Valley is very special land, and it's agricultural, and it should stay that way. So what, so that was my reference to that in connection with the Green Valley plan. Does the Green Valley plan have the potential to conflict in any way with the Sassoon Valley strategic plan?
Not, not to my knowledge. They're distinct, and as you said, the, the goal of this plan, and the reason the county's behind it, is because it does preserve agriculture. It is a model of conservation by converting development rights and setting aside fifteen hundred acres for conservation and focusing the development in an area that would get the most, most benefit.
Okay, well, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, mayor. I was just going to... Yeah, so for me, I'm, you know, a year and a half in. The comments said before about my colleagues, I was not included on that list. So this is me coming from facts and from listening to both sides. And for me, I understand the concerns of land use and us going into, into Sassoon Valley, which I have been here and present at every council meeting and every special meeting, and that is not what we're planning on doing. We've never said that. And I know it is a concern. But again, I think the point is that today and tonight, we are talking about an inter-agency water agreement that is before us. And in reading the facts and listening to, you know, both sides and what is before us, I, and for me, it is just, it's that, at this, in this point. And so I appreciate everyone coming up and sharing their concerns and opinions. But again, for me, today is about this agreement and the city, and cities, what the city's purpose is in it. And that is just in cleaning the water. Not that we are providing the water, we're not going to be getting, you know, we're acting as a wholesaler, which we are allowed to legally do, correct? I think so. Yeah. Okay. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, colleagues?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Boy, please. Go ahead.
Thank you. I want to say first that I appreciate everything that my colleagues have said, and I understand very much the sensitivity of when people come up and say, "Oh, you got money from this person, so that means you must vote this way." I happen to know that that is not true with me, and I hope with, and I know with others that I've served with for a long time, that it isn't. So let, let me just say that I don't think that that, those kind of comments are necessary. I will also say that I feel like the developer here, the builder, you know, they've gone through this for a very long time, and I am glad to see that it will not cost city taxpayers money in any way, and that we're going to be indemnified if we vote for this, which I, I figure we will. I do have concerns, and Pam asked some questions about preserving ag land. Well, Middle Green Valley was one of, it is still prime ag land, and it, for a long time, was the major grower in this area before our time. It was known for its cherries and its pears and other things. And so, yes, we are, if we agree to this, we will be sending water that we've treated up to an area that's going to be developed, some of it preserved, as they said, but developed into four hundred homes. We don't need to get into all the details there. We've heard all of this time and time again. We are, we are responsible for what we do here on this city council, for the city of Fairfield. And I am not convinced, not even for a minute, from what staff said, "Well, this is good because it'll churn the water in the reservoir or, or whatever." If that's the best we can come up with of why this is good for Fairfield, I have to say that it's not. Sassoon Valley, you know, where several of us, well, I grew up in Fairfield and Sassoon Valley and cut fruit and did all of those things. We all, we all want to preserve it now, but some of us may not be here next year. And we will get different city councils. And we will get different city councils. And different city councils can do whatever they want. And they can look at this as precedent setting. And that concerns me. We already heard tonight that the Green Valley folks up there, they're tired of paying for the Vallejo water rates. And I know a whole lot about that, too, because I was a reporter. And I was the person who broke the stories on the issues with the tri-halomethanes, the cancer-causing agents in the water coming out of Lake Currie. So, I'm very well-versed in this. And I do have a great concern that we're moving ahead without ever even speaking to the city of Vallejo. So, I have to ask the city manager, have we spoken with the city of Vallejo, with Ms. Schoenberger?
No, I haven't. I will say, I was directed in February to get a draft agreement, and I feel like my task was...
Yeah, no, we've not spoken with the city of Vallejo. We were responding with this item when we originally brought it to council for direction back in, I believe, April, to a letter from Solano County requesting that we enter into negotiations on their behalf with SID.
All right, so now it's the county that wants this so badly. What are we going to do about the city of Vallejo? Nothing? Just ignore that she felt compelled to come on tonight and call us? Can anybody give me a hint about why they might be upset? Is it about money that they want Middle Green Valley to have to pay for water from them? Can somebody help me there? No?
Is that a question for staff or any of your colleagues?
Yes, that is a question for staff.
I mean, I can speculate. I would assume that it would have to do with rate payers that would pay into the Vallejo water system. I know in the specific plan and in the EIR, there were multiple options that were presented in order for this Middle Green Valley project to receive water. One of those options that was identified and then approved under a certified EIR is for SID to wheel water through city of Fairfield's treatment plant and have it pumped back into SID territory, which is the inter-agency water agreement before you.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm going to go back to just what we know and why I have to vote the way that I do. I've tried since 2008 to think about everybody. And I've approved and voted for most every project, every project, in fact, that this developer, this builder, has brought in front of us. And no, I haven't ever gotten a penny from them. So, for the people out there who want to say, "Oh, that's because..." Well, here's an instance where I haven't gotten a penny, and I voted for all of them because I thought they were good for Fairfield. And I think that they do a good job out there, okay? But because of my principles, I can't vote for this today because of how it could impact our beloved Sassoon Valley, and nobody can tell you that it won't. We'll protect it, yes. But I'm going to go back to what is this doing for Fairfield? And there's no good answer for that. And that's the bottom line for me, is what am I doing for Fairfield? Now, if this development had already been built and the water system failed there, I would vote yes. But this is something that isn't built. It's sitting there, and Chuck has said it will be built, and I believe it will. I believe that it will. But I don't believe that we should be offering city services, because I do believe, from reading the general plan myself, that that's true. And I just want to say that, again, to my colleagues who are upset about people bringing up things, I think that's unfair. And I'll just say this. I have also been hurt and from people bringing up things. People have tried to destroy me personally and politically because of my stance. I don't want that to happen to you. And I'm sorry that this happened tonight. It's really out of line. So, Mr. Mayor, really, that's all I have to say, except for I hope that this stuff stops, this nasty political stuff. I hope that people will leave me alone while I'm running and not pull any of this stuff and come up and do this kind of thing because Chuck's running for something or whatever. It just needs to stop, this destruction. It doesn't need to be this way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have Beth Schoenberger on the line again.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Valeria, can you put her online? Thank you.
Hi, I just wanted to clarify and answer the question about Vallejo's interests. And most specifically, that Vallejo has a joint exercise of powers agreement with Solano County as the exclusive potable water purveyor for the area. So, that is a pretty important fact that I have not heard addressed, and wanted to make sure that was mentioned as part of the answer to what Vallejo's interest is. And Vallejo provides drinking water in the area currently and has multiple options for increasing supply. Our water supply is robust and completely compliant. And the reason that the water rates have been on the higher side is because the water treatment plant size was limited when it was first installed due to pressures from the community, and we are taking active measures to increase the supply to serve and reduce rates. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Madam Clerk? Bring it back for council action.
And, Mr. Mayor, can I make a recommendation? Before you, on this item are two separate resolutions, 2022-214, which is the indemnification agreement between Solano County and the city of Fairfield, and 2022-215, which is the agreement authorizing the execution of the Potable Water Services Agreement. You obviously have the discretion to make a motion either way as to both, which you often do. But I do want to bring to your attention, we've had comments with at least one person urging adoption of one and opposition to another. So, it's up to the council, but I would ask that if you make a motion as to both, be clear that you're making a motion as to both. If you're going to make a motion as to one, you can take them separate. But it's up to your sound discretion of whoever wants to make a motion, if you make a motion.
Councilwoman Tonison, please.
I'll make that motion to both of them, to Resolution 22... 2022-210...
214.
No, no, sorry.
214.
14 and 2022-215.
And that's to approve?
That's to approve, correct?
Okay, have a motion on the floor? Is there a second, please? So, been seconded by Councilman Tim. Roll call, vote, please. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bertoni?
Yes, because who am I to overrule a voter-approved project?
Councilmember Moi?
No.
Councilmember Penduro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vicaro?
Yes.
And Mayor Price?
Yes.
Congratulations unanimously. I'm sorry, it's a split vote.
Pass the six one.
Six one.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I request, if the council's okay with it, that we bump 21, item 21, up? I have to recuse myself from item 20?
Go now, at your request. We'll go to item number 21, please.
You guys all good?
Yeah, we'll take a restroom break.
We're on item number 21, please. Madam Clerk, if you would.
Item 21, Public Hearing and First Reading an Introduction of Ordinance 2022-09 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Amending Chapter 27, Article 10, Section 27, 1104 of the Fairfield Municipal Code, also known as the City of Fairfield Community Preservation, to establish the regulations of vacant window storefronts in the downtown. And our presenter is Jonathan Luong, Community Development Management Analyst.
Good evening, Mayor Price, Member of City Council. I'm Jonathan Luong with the Management House with Community Development Department. Tonight, I'll be introducing to the vibrant vacancy ordinance, which is to set regulations for vacant window fronts in downtown. So we'll start off, for fiscal year 2022-23, City Council set four development goals for downtown. One of those to focus on were placemaking and activation. Under that, that was to advance the branding campaign to change perceptions of downtown to more of Food &amp; Arts District, and to add more public art and art-based programming. And to achieve these goals, the first step is to set minimum standards for vacant window storefronts of commercial properties. Secondly, is to promote and encourage sites for public art visibility within the downtown. And third, provide clear, specific guidance for both the city and existing business and property owners. So the proposed ordinance ends, which will support avoiding and discouraging visual blight that many of us know can come from prolonged periods of neglect or failure to pay attention to. Also, another one is mitigating potential quality vibe issues that can be vandalism, debris, graffiti, and so forth. But most importantly, it really is about supporting existing businesses and activating the downtown as their food and arts district to increase and promote patronage, pedestrian activity, and really just, again, changing that perception of downtown. So within the proposed language, staff are bringing forth four options that owners can use to meet our standards. The first one is faux window dressings. So that is defined as decals, back panels of art that can affix the back of a window front. It can also be just a kind of a decor. Most common one you'll see right now, it's very popular, is vinyl adhesive that kind of cover and show vibrant activity. That one is a very common approach. The second one, which is of course when I'm championing, but it's works of art, it is any paintings or sculptures that can be displayed behind the window front, but they can include seasonal decorations, they can include historical photos, and also anything with educational material to the public right of ways where it's visible in public spaces. Third are paintings that can be applied from an artist directly onto the window front, should they choose so. And fourth is all of a, is more of an encompassing other measures about, that can be when the owner submitting certain plan to the city, it can be exceptionally creative and thoughtful and really meet public art programming in the downtown, and we want to leave that open to discuss with owners. And a big question is how the city is going to support. So there are three options laid out, how the city will support and our owners in meeting these standards. The first one is of no cost at all. The city will work with the artist's community to make an arrangement between the owners and the artist's community to have the art displayed for whatever they wish as expiration of time. And that's typically done with a private agreement between the two, that the city doesn't get involved in, but just facilitates. Option two is more of a low-cost option, that owners can purchase art, decor, paintings, and decals for themselves. Looking at local vendors, staff got some initial quotes, and the range is between like $300 to $500 for kind of an entire window front display. And the third option is matching or full, which is what the city will do is we may even match or fully reimburse owners who have, again, plans that are submitted to the city that are very creative, support public arts visibility in downtown, and really have aligned And so with that, I'm open to questions. Thank you.
Comments or questions, please? Scott, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Jonathan. This is a, this is a long time coming. I know we've had some discussions about this, and I really appreciate you guys bringing this to the front. How is the advertising going on? Are we doing flyers, mailers, websites, other notices to the owners of the building and to the business owners? Or are these all vacant buildings that we're talking about?
So what we've done is, we've, of course, put this out on public hearing notice, but also working with Debbie Tabby to get this out to the downtown community and let them know. And so this has been done not without a thoughtful effort on reaching folks in downtown. So we're continuing to do so, and work through Debbie, work through our channels to communicate to folks.
And when you, when you have a window like this, or a window that's in disarray, is there a timeframe? Are they cited by code enforcement? Or is it something that, have we taken it that far? Or is there a timeframe that they have to, you know, get the money from the city or get matched?
There's, you know, as we're starting to develop this, we're not focusing on code enforcement primarily.
We're just helping out the businesses.
Helping them out, support them.
Good.
Because there's a mutual goal to really create a good space for everyone to come into Food &amp; Arts District.
So if someone comes up to me when I'm walking downtown and they say, "How do I do this?"
Oh, at the point, they should really come to either Dwayne Dolman from Agribusiness Development, or myself in Community Development, and as we move this forward, because this is the first public hearing and introduction, but at that point, they have an action plan. And if they're interested, we'll give them an action plan and work with them one-on-one to get an idea of what they want to do and the kind of the costs, and work with them on that end.
Love it. Great job.
Any other comments, colleagues?
Is it a choice between the three? Or can you do any of the three? No cost, low-cost match?
It's up to the owner. The city, we're going to exercise our discretion in talking with them.
Yeah, you can do all, you can do either one.
You can do all, yeah.
Thank you.
Any comments, colleagues? Entertained a motion then to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry, I've got to open the public hearing. Forgot about that in my haste.
I do have one.
I'm going to get back to item number 20.
I do have one speaker card from Nora Dezon.
Nora, please.
Sorry, this is actually off-topic, but I didn't want to break the quorum. I just want to let everybody know that I got threatened for speaking at the previous item. And I think I'd been told before that everybody has a right to speak and to say what they have to say, but I was told that my ass was going to get kicked. So I hope you have been complaining about other people who are not being professional toward you, but the people that you just voted for said to me, "We're going to kick your ass." So keep that in mind. Thank you for letting me speak.
Don't use that language.
That's what was said to me.
I know, but that doesn't give you an excuse to use it.
How can I convey what I was, how I was threatened?
Use a euphemism, please. Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Tonison, is there a second, please? Seconded by Councilwoman Bertoni.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you need to close the public hearing.
Public hearing is closed. Thank you. Been moved and seconded.
Roll call vote.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bertoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Penduro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vicarrel?
Yes.
And Mayor Price.
Yep. Motion carries unanimously. Now we go back to item number 20.
And Mr. Mayor, I will have to recuse myself from item 20 per direction from the city attorney. I live too close to the project.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 20, Public Hearing and Resolution 2022-216 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Approving, Sustaining, or Denying or Overrolling the Appeal of the Revocation of Business License Number 21001161, Belonging to Auto Service and Towing, Located at 1350 North Texas Street in Fairfield. And our presenter is David Lim, our city attorney, Jeremy Prophet from the Police Department. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, this is Catherine. Before we start this, I was disturbed by what I heard from Ms. Dezon up there. I would like our, anybody that's there from the Police Department to speak to her about that. This is the kind of stuff that I'm talking about. We can't have this. And so I want the Police Department to speak with her to see if there was a threat that needs to be acted upon, if that really happened. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilwoman Moy, Ms. Dezon, as well as Police Chief Cantrell, and I saw Captain Marshall go out as well, went out and they were speaking to her in the foyer.
Thank you so much, Mr. City Manager.
Item number 20, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, again, my name is Jeremy.
Can we stop for a minute? Can we have the mayor follow the hearing? Because this is an appeal hearing. Thank you.
This hearing is to consider the appeal brought by Auto Service and Towing, Located at 1350 North Texas Street, Fairfield. Can we please have all parties to this hearing introduce themselves? And would you come forward, please, to do that? So our folks at home can hear you and see you.
Thank you. My name is Randy Thomas, and...
My name is Mavashur Chowdhury. I am the owner of the business that we are speaking about.
I represent Payless Towing.
Okay.
Okay.
A reminder that this is a hearing brought on by an appeal by Auto Service and Towing regarding the revocation of their business license number 21001161 pursuant to Fairfield Municipal Code 10B-31. City Council will hold a hearing to determine whether to approve or deny this appeal. A reminder that this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, so we will swear witnesses and consider evidence. However, the council has broad discretion to consider this matter, so we will not be strictly following the rules of evidence or other courtroom procedures. Are both sides ready to proceed?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Will the city present a brief overview of the issues that led to the revocation of business license number 21001161?
And Madam Clerk, can you please swear, Mr. Prophet?
Yes. Do I need to approach, or?
No, you can do it from there.
Oh, okay. Can you raise your right hand? Jeremy, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Again, my name is Jeremy Prophet, Police Support Manager that oversees our code enforcement unit. Tonight, I also have Code Enforcement Acting Supervisor Elizabeth Dolby and Code Enforcement Officer Kathy Rambliss. The three of us have worked on these matters with Payless Towing. I'll go on a brief timeline, and I just want to express, Code Enforcement, we pride ourselves in working with our community and our business owners and doing outreach education before we pursue adverse actions. So tonight, I'm going to go over a brief timeline and discuss and share with you where we're at and why we're at today's business revocation. So April 7, 2020, Code Enforcement opened up a case on 1350 North Texas called Payless Towing. After receiving complaints of a tow yard, a preliminary notice to abate nuisances were mailed to this business property owner on April 7, 2022. On April 11, 2022, Code Enforcement received another complaint that Payless Towing is operating out of 1350 North Texas as a tow yard. GM Towing also reached out and stated they had contracted to pick up a vehicle at Payless Towing for enterprise rental. Payless refused to release this vehicle, and they reached out to the Fairfield Police Department. There was also call for service of a female stating her car was towed to this yard, but there was no one available for her to pick up the vehicle. The tow yard was locked, and there is no one on scene. Code Enforcement Officer Kathy Rambliss checked the yard, and there was no one available or in the premise. The yard was surrounded by a chain leaning fence with netting over it, so the yard was not visible. As you'll see in the attachments that were presented to all parties, you'll see a call for service, an incident report that was presented that outlines one of the calls for service on August 16, where one of our residents called in and was concerned that they could not pick up their vehicle from this tow yard. The automotive repair license in our city and county, Mr. Chidler, also indicated, excuse me, let me back up. On April 11, 2022, Officer Chandler contacted, planning to receive a copy of Payless Towing's application for a business license, sent to Mr. Chidler. The application was for auto services with a note stating towing is regarded to auto repair, not impounding. Mr. Chidler was also found not to have a Bureau of Automotive Repair license in our city or county. Mr. Chidler also indicated that there was a total gross of $5,000 per year on his application. You'll also see as evidence, his original application was submitted to the City of Fairfield. You'll see his full information and description. It says towing in regards to auto repair. And this is key, because the reason why we're revoking this license was they're in violation of the zoning code. You know, go into that in more details. It also states that this was not for impounding. This was not for towing, meaning impounding a vehicle. And you'll also see in the bottom of this application, it states originally was put in there $50,000 in gross receipts. It was then changed to $5,000. And I just also wanted to reach out and show that there is print on here that says gross receipts are subject to be audited. To this date, we have not seen any proof or any cooperation to address these issues.
And can I, just for a second, to help the council make their decision, they were given a packet that was provided to both parties. It contains all the information that was provided, both by Mr. Chowdhury and his attorney, and the city. They have been bait stamped, which means there is a four-digit number in the bottom right-hand corner of your packet, from 0001 to 0064. And for ease of reference, I'd ask the parties to identify the items they're describing by that number at the bottom right-hand corner. So Mr. Prophet has referenced an incident report, which he provided to both parties, and that's 0064. And then he's now referencing a business license application, which is 0040.
The business license was issued as an auto repair store. The permit says towing can only be done in reference to vehicle repair services. A towing business is not allowed at this location as outlined in our zoning, and a conditional use permit must be obtained. On May 10, 2020, I spoke with Mr. Chowdhury, owner and operator of Payless Towing, on Friday, May 6, 2022, in the afternoon, to let him know our concerns, and that we would be, that he would be receiving a notice of violation. I also asked that he cease his business activities until he can resolve these issues and work with building, planning, and code enforcement. Mr. Chowdhury also acknowledged that he was towing and operating a tow yard out of this location at 1350 North Texas. But he said the city okayed this operation as long as he did not contract his work with the Fairfield Police Department. I informed him that this is not correct, and to please reach out to building, planning, and code enforcement to help resolve these matters. Mr. Chowdhury proceeded to say that he felt we were harassing him. When we called the Fairfield Police Department, he reached out after I called the main hotline to the Fairfield Payless Towing. I was rerouted to Vacabil Towing Office. So again, I cannot reach anybody at that business directly. But Mr. Chowdhury did return my phone call around 112 hours, and I connected with him and again restated him that we wanted these actions corrected, and that we'd now have to move forward to take care of these issues. With no compliance gained, a memo was requested of a revocation to the business license was provided to the city manager for approval on May 18, 2022. It was approved by the city manager on May 25, 2022. The notice was served by certified mail and in person. Some of these items were returned and refused by sender, but we do know that he obtained these because shortly afterwards, we met in person, Mr. Chandler and I, and he did state... state that he had these items on hand. So we do know he did receive it somehow, but we did receive some of the items that we sent in mail refused. The revocation was based on the following findings. The business license application dated February 25, 2019, with Mr. Chandler's name as the president of Chandler Corporations. In the business license application, it stated the description of the business was for towing in regards to auto repair, not impounding. In the business license application, it was stated that his total gross of receipts were $5,000. I find that interesting, that total gross of receipts were $5,000. And again, we have not been proved otherwise that that's what his annual gross is for this business. We do also, during our fact finding, found that he was in contract with CHP on a tow rotation. So he was in contract with CHP on a tow rotation to impound vehicles at this location, and the zoning is not permitted for that unless he got a conditional use permit. That was not done currently at this time. On April 1, officers from the Fairfield Police Department were dispatched to 1350 North Texas on a report of a customer requiring assistance to receive their vehicle from a closed business, and no one was present on the property. The vehicle had been towed by CHP and was impounded on the property, which is in direct violation of this business license. On May 3, 2022, officers from the Fairfield Police Department were dispatched again to 1350 North Texas Street on a report of a tow truck driver attempting to retrieve a vehicle at the business, and they were refused. Again, this is in violation of the business license at 1350 North Texas Street. On May night, 2022, Code Enforcement officers received confirmation from CHP that they have entered into agreement by Payless Towing, located at 1350 North Texas Street, to tow and impound vehicles to that same property. CHP noted that this agreement was not a formal contract, and documents violations will result in progressive discipline from their agency. Mr. Chidler prelims and revocations were returned again and refused by sender, but we do know he received a copy. So Section 10B.32 FMC provides a business license may be revoked for any of the following reasons. The applicant has failed to comply with the application for the business license or renew of the business license. The application has knowingly made false, misleading, or fraudulent statements of material facts in application for the business license in the report or statement required to be filled out by the city. The business license and activities or the conduct of the business at the proposed location is prohibited. Again, this is prohibited because of the zoning code, and the reason why it's prohibited is because if you didn't want to operate here, you would need a conditional use permit. But what was told in the business license, they were not going to operate an impounding service. They were going to operate a maintenance shop with towing services. So if you, you know, had an issue, you need your vehicle towed there, they would repair it. And that was legally authorized in that location. That was acceptable. But that's not what actually we've stumbled upon, and we found facts of that the operation was different than what the business license was asked. And that concludes our summary of the minutes.
Would you like to present your appeal, or they have?
Mr. Chowdhury?
Yes, if I could have my client join me, would that be okay?
Yes.
I'm never fond of being the last appointment, but my name is Randy Thomas. I'm an attorney. I'm not a total stranger to this area. Fifty years ago, seems like a long time, I was a law clerk over at your courthouse. So I've been to Fairfield quite a few times. I have the privilege tonight to represent Payless Towing. And I want to start out by thanking Mr. Lim. In our numerous conversations, he's been extremely professional in dealing and helping me through this process, so I appreciate that. I will indicate that I learned, you always learn a little more when you go in person and hear what's to be said. And that's true tonight because my issues were a little different than what I heard. But I want to start out by saying, my client wishes to apologize to everyone for his mistakes. And he has made mistakes. What I want to show each of you tonight is those mistakes can be corrected, and that this does not warrant, this action does not warrant, in effect, destroying a family business. Brothers, father, this business has gone on since its inception in San Francisco 35-plus years ago. So I will address each of the issues. A lot of it has to do with semantics and the understanding of what something means, particularly when it's in writing. Let me give you an example. The permit, the business license that was issued to my client is an exhibit. See if I can find it. Fortunately, mine doesn't have a bait statement, but it's the actual business license, and it reads auto service and towing. Auto service and towing.
And, Mr. Sorry-
Doesn't say anything other than that on that business license.
And for the council, it's bait stamp number 0011.
So what was my client doing? He was doing auto service, and he was towing. And in any towing business, or any repair business, or body shop business, towing is part of the situation. And this location is a perfect location for it because for the last 35 years, before my client's family bought this location, it was a body shop with a tow yard. It had the same secure yard that you'll see in the pictures that I'd like to present the colored ones. I made enough for everybody. If it'd be okay to pass them around?
Can we have those over?
See, if that seemed interesting.
And for the record-
Yeah, we already have.
Yeah, we did provide copies. There, you have color copies in front of you on larger paper. You have black and white photos that are marked as bait stamp numbers 0028 through 0039, but the color copies are of better quality.
So the location is a good location. And before I go much further, I should point out that my client has an application for a conditional use permit at that location, and that's ongoing, that application. And he was recently asked to do one thing, and that was to have a sound check done of the area because there is a residence nearby. He's had that sound check done, and the recommendations are contained in your packet. And what it says to do is to put up a blanket-type fencing for one side. The other thing you'll notice in the photographs is that this location, the screening is unique. You don't see any cars from the street. It looks like a clean, clean business. So for a tow yard, and I've been to many of them because I've represented a lot of tow companies up and down the state, and this tow yard's one of the cleanest you'll see. So as I read the issues, the first issue had to do with my client, Mr. Chowdhury, indicating that he himself was the president of the corporation. That was a mistake, and perhaps material, perhaps immaterial. His father is the president of the corporation, retired some years ago. So he was an officer, but not the president, and he apologizes for making that mistake. I don't know of anything bad that happened as a result of that. So I don't think that's overwhelming. The second issue has to do with, and this is found on bait stamp 0002 in the front of your packet, has to do with his business license application. He described it as towing in regard to auto repair, no impounding. Impounding is a term of art in the tow business. Impounding is what CHP or Fairfield Police do. The only time tow companies can impound is on private property, not public. So this tow company, Payless Tow, doesn't do any private impounding. It doesn't do any impounding at all. The CHP impounds the vehicle, or the Fairfield Police impounds the vehicle, calls a tow company and said, please come tow this vehicle and store it for us. So he provides, this tow company, Payless, provides storage. He's not doing the impounding, and under the law, which there's some definitions contained in your packet, under the law, he has no ability to impound. So the term impound versus storage is very important. You couldn't tell if the parking lot out here was his tow yard, and there were three impound cars in it, and seven cars waiting to be fixed. If you walked out there, you couldn't tell the difference. But in his records, the Highway Patrol or the Fairfield Police Department impounded it and wants a place to store it. So they call a tow truck company, and these cars get stored. And tow truck companies all over your community, that's one of the services that they provide. The third question had to do with him saying that he only earned $5,000. There's a simple answer to that one. They ask him for what he earned the year before. The business didn't start until November. It hadn't even got started up. In fact, his real receipts were only $1,000. So he wasn't misleading anybody. The business had just started. A prime example of what I'm talking about is in the fourth paragraph contained on page It talks about whose vehicle has been towed by the California Highway Patrol. You see that sentence? That's 100% incorrect. The CHP doesn't tow vehicles. They call private tow companies to tow vehicles. And was found to be impounded on the property. No, it's stored on the property. CHP impounds it on the roadway and calls a tow company and says, store this vehicle. So when he wrote down no impounding on his application, that's true. He wasn't impounding. He was storing vehicles. I can't think of a single tow company in the state that doesn't store vehicles along with their towing. So let's look at the ultimate harm. And that's why those pictures are valuable. If you look at the very first picture, it describes all the auto-related businesses and storage businesses in the area. And that whole area, I've driven by it, been to it a couple times, is inundated with this type of industry, so it's clearly inappropriate use. And the only concern for the conditional use permit has been sound, how much sound is generated by it, and he's satisfying that. So the bottom line here is that he made some mistakes. And I tend to disagree with the analysis given about notices and not receiving notices. Soon as I found out about this, I contacted Mr. Lim, and he indicated he could stay in business until this appeal was heard tonight. So here you have a family that own a business, they're trying to do the right thing. They called law enforcement one or two times because people come to tow companies upset about the prices they're charged to store vehicles and cause scenes. That's not anything we should be upset about. The real issues have to do with his compliance of his application and his use of the property under the permit. He's addressed that. He's going for the conditional use permit and hope it'll be granted. But if the action tonight is, no, we're going to uphold this, we're not going to grant the appeal, then the building department is going to use that. You heard enough conversation about precedent tonight. I don't think you need to hear anymore, but they will take this into consideration. So the reason I'm here, and the reason my client is here, is to let you know that this is a mistake in the free enterprise business system, a mistake that can be corrected, and this is an important business in your area, and it can serve a purpose. The CHP had an agreement with them, a tow service agreement. They were acting with them properly. Eventually, they can apply for, and they're entitled to apply for, the Fairfield Police Department of storage. Storage versus impound. Let's not get lost in the use of the words. Let's look at what this gentleman is trying to do to have a viable business in your community and a business that can serve the public. My client and I would entertain any and all questions.
Anything you wish to add, sir?
Yes, I may.
And can we have him sworn in, please?
Could you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to apologize. Of course, Mr. Thomas did apologize, might be, but I want to personally apologize for any misunderstanding or any mistakes or anything that I may have done to make it seem that I was not being accurate on my application. This is a family-owned business. My father's been running this business in San Francisco since the 1970s. We recently relocated to Vacaville, and now we are trying to expand our business in Fairfield as well. And thus, we purchased 1350 North Texas, a vacant building for, I don't know, three, four years now. And we want to help improve the community, improve the neighborhood, and we want to bring in a business that actually works for everything, for our benefit and the city's benefit. And so, like I say once again, I do apologize for any harm that I may have caused through paperwork or material or non-material, of course. And hopefully, if you have any questions to that, I can answer regarding towing, or Mr. Randy can help us answer those as well.
Yeah, follow it.
Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, thank you. So I can ask questions now, Mr. Lim?
Yes.
All right. Well, both of you. The name Payless Towing?
Pardon me?
The name is Payless Towing?
Correct.
Is this an auto repair place or a towing place?
Well, right now-
Just, is it an auto repair or is it towing?
Both.
How many repair people are on s-
It's changing to a body repair business, not engine repair.
Changing from what, sir? Changing from what?
From engine-type work on the vehicles to body repair. They have a body shop, they have a body shop in Vacaville as well.
Okay, so how many mechanics did you employ there?
As of right now, we have no mechanics. As we're waiting our BAR approval, BAR is the Bureau of Automotive Repair, until they give us our approval, we cannot formally perform any repairs. A conditional use permit that we have applied for and are in progress right now includes that as well. And once that is approved, then we can pursue further, but we are not allowed to do any repair until that conditional use is approved. And so thus, at this location, we have no mechanics, aside from our mechanics in our Vacaville location.
So if you had no mechanics, and your store or your business name is Payless Towing, and the police department says however the error was made on your business license because you cannot be just a towing company there, that's correct?
I believe that's incorrect. And the reason I say that is the zoning for this allows us to do repair and related for that industry. The only concern that we had when we spoke to the building department was that when we want to go further and more into auto body or anything extensive of that, then we would have to apply for conditional use. And so we waited on that until we had the proper funds to get into that, and thus we're the stage we're at right now.
So did you ever tow a vehicle and have it repaired at your shop?
No vehicles towed. Vehicles have been towed that have been repaired, but not at this facility, as I said. We don't have a license to repair until the Bureau of Automotive Repair gives us that license. So right now, we are only using this as storage in our Vacaville location. We have no storage at all. We are at a major intersection, so we store vehicles here. Once they've been approved, then yes. Many vehicles have been stored. So to address your question, many vehicles have been stored here that have been approved for repairs, but we don't do repairs here yet until we can get our building permit and our ARD license.
How many, how many other, so you tow for the Highway Patrol?
Correct.
Do you tow for any other agency, any other law enforcement agency?
No other law enforcement agencies yet, as we're still applying. We've only been in this area for three years. So when we're coming in here, we have to establish that relationship.
Do you make any private property tow's from any apartment complexes?
None at this location.
So how many vehicles are on your lot on a normal day that you have towed in?
Vehicles that have been, as of right now, I would say probably one to two vehicles that are actively being towed, but they're constantly rotating.
No, he's asking how many on a given day are stored there.
On a given day, stored, I would say about 10 to maybe 18 at most.
And where do those cars come from, sir?
They come from motor clubs, which are insurance agencies. So AAA, well, we don't do AAA, but Allstate, Farmers, GEICO, CHP, of course, things of that sort. So sometimes vehicles are towed in for repairs that we end up storing there, or other times Allstate may have a vehicle- Allstate may have a vehicle that was involved in an accident, or they may have a vehicle that's just stuck and they need us to store, so things of that sort.
Okay, and so just so I'm clear, eventually, you want a repair shop, but currently, since you've been in business, you haven't been a repair shop. You are just storing vehicles there for insurance companies and the California Highway Patrol, correct?
Partially, because we're also storing vehicles for our repairs in Vacaville as well. So I do run a repair shop in Vacaville, and so we're storing vehicles for ourself as well that are waiting repair process.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you.
I might point out one other quick thing, is the California Highway Patrol extended their contract. They have the same process that you have here, that if you appeal, you get to continue business. This decision tonight will impact their ability to conduct business with CHP in the future. So that's another impact on the business.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Bertani, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Much appreciated. Do we have the CHP agreement before us?
No, we don't, councilmember.
Okay, is it possible to look at that agreement? Because I'm thinking about the distinction between storage and impounding, because it seems like one of the major issues is that impounding vehicles at this location is outside of the code.
So is storage, councilmember.
Oh, so is storage.
I wanted to clarify that. I didn't get a chance to speak. In our code, it says impounding and storage is not permitted in this area unless you apply for a conditional use permit. That was not done until we revoked the license. That's why we're at today where we're at, is this work was... Like, we could've avoided this if we would've had partnerships and relationships. That was never done until we had to go all the way to the revocation of the business license. To this point, planning and ourselves have not seen the full application. There's been a lot of dancing around and playing with...
Wait, 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 excuse me. What do you mean you haven't seen the full application? The application that I'm looking for at Bates...
For his conditional use permit. The... What he is speaking about is his conditional use permit that he is saying he applied for after the fact. This application that we have in front of us is all that we have currently, and it states the use that he is not using it for. He said he was gonna open up an auto repair store. They're not doing an auto repair store.
Okay.
They're towing, that's it.
Hold on, hold on, one second, please. One second. Okay, so the application that I'm looking for at Bates 0040...
Yes, ma'am.
Thank God for Bates. And why are they called Bates Numbers, Mr. Lim? Do you know?
I actually do know. Do you wanna know the answer?
Yes, I do.
The company that originally made the stamping machine that you use...
Love it.
...was Bates International Corporation.
I knew you'd know. Thank you for that. It makes that document identification very effective. Thank you. So 0040, that's the business license application, which describes the business as towing in regards to auto repair slash no impounding. And then it has the total gross receipts. I guess initially, it was $50,000, and then that was marked out, and that's $5,000. Okay? All right. Now, in addition to this license, you're saying that there is another conditional use permit that has been applied for, right?
Upon revocation of their business license, they said they were gonna apply for a conditional use permit, which is what should've been done. My understanding that has not been fully processed.
Do we have that application for a conditional use permit before us this evening?
I can tell you that...
That was a yes or no?
The answer, I don't know. No. It's with the city.
Okay, so it's not...
I have proof of it, if you give me a chance to tell you. The proof of it is you have the report on the sound study that makes the recommendations. The city required that study in order to address that application. So the application has definitely been made.
Okay, but if I'm understanding this correctly, which I may not be, because we've been in here a long time, so that's why I'm making this point of clarification, the conditional use permit does not speak to the issues that are before us tonight, because that's about sound and something else. But the problem here is that this, your business license application at 0040 says auto repair, no impounding, and if I understand your point of view is that impounding and storage are prohibited by the code in this area without a conditional use permit, which has not been put before this city council tonight for this hearing, and even if you had brought it to us tonight, it's completely irrelevant, because it's not addressing the issues that take the current use beyond the code. Is that right? I'm saying...
That's a decision for you to make. That's actually a fact for you to determine, as a fact finder.
But I mean, so you're saying that impounding and storage are beyond the code, outside of the code. In order to address that, they would need to file... The applicant would need to file a conditional use permit to permit storage or impounding or storage.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay. So what I'm saying is that even if you had a conditional use permit before us tonight that you've already filed, it's irrelevant to correcting these issues. Is that right? Because it's about sound, not about storage.
No, no, so just to kinda help everybody, they applied for a business license for a use they're not currently using. What they need to do is work with planning and request a conditional use permit, because this zoning area...
A conditional use permit for what?
To be able to turn it into a tow yard for storage or impounding.
Okay, and I'm saying that the conditional use permit that they claim to have filed doesn't address that issue right there. Do you see what I'm saying?
No, it does. I might be able to add clarity here.
Okay.
But I just confirmed with city attorney, since I signed the revocation letter, but I'll need the city clerk to swear me in.
And before we do that, I wanna clarify. Mr. Thomas referenced a sound study, just so we're all clear. He provided that to the city, and it's in your packet from Bates stamp 0049 to 0063.
Thank you.
But...
I swear.
I'm sorry. Pass away, okay. Sorry. David, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, so to your question, Councilwoman Bertani, you were making the point, I believe, that the item before us tonight is a revocation of a business license. Under the zoning code, they would've required a conditional use permit to do impounding or storing of cars. I think, as we heard from Mr. Chodri, that they are storing cars on the lot, which would be required, which would require a conditional use permit. Therefore, we should not have issued them a business license for storing cars. They should not have a business license for storing cars, because the business license says that it's automotive repair, I believe.
No, it doesn't. The business license says, I'm gonna read it, auto service and towing. And how do you have towing without storing cars? I'm going by the license that he got from this city, says auto service and towing. It doesn't say... And the only thing they wanted him to write on his application was no impounding. And everyone is confusing what impounding is. Storage and impounding are two different things.
Just to clarify, it also does not state storage, and that's where they're violating. They're storing vehicles. They admitted that they're storing vehicles. You cannot in this zoning area unless you request a conditional use permit that has not been processed. That's where we're at today.
And I'm not gonna belabor. I'm saying I understand what you just said, but the conditional use permit they have applied for does not even address storage or... It doesn't address storage.
Yes, it does. They've not presented one. I've looked back. I cannot see an application for a business or for a conditional use permit at this address. They cannot impound or store vehicles at this address until they have a conditional use permit.
And that is not before us tonight?
Correct.
That's it. Thank you.
Well, I wanna go back to semantics and what you rely upon, and who knows what the man at the counter told my client? The business license says towing. And as a result, in any towing or in any automotive repair, you gotta store vehicles. You have to. So my client was never told he couldn't store vehicles. He was told he could not impound them, which he does not do. He's got an application going, but if you vote against him tonight, it'll kill that application, it'll kill his CHP, and here's a man who bought a building that's been empty for a long period of time in this community that wants to grow responsibly.
Mr. Thomas, I have a question, sir.
Yes.
And perhaps, well, I've forgotten. I asked him, "How long have you been in business?" Did you say three months or three years?
At this location...
At this location...
Yes.
Since January of this year. Our permit, we applied for our license in November, so only one month last year, thus the...
Come to the microphone, please. I understood what you said. So November of last year, and you've hired no mechanics. Is that correct?
We've hired no mechanics at this location. That is correct.
Okay. And we talk about Mr. Thomas's semantics. I look here, and it says auto service and towing, because if you're gonna service my car, my car doesn't start in my driveway, you come pick it up, you tow it, you fix it, I come down and I pick it up. Correct?
Of course.
Okay, that's different than CHP calling you to take a car from a guy that's been arrested for DUI on the freeway at 3:00 in the morning, correct? Is there a difference?
Yeah, one's a tow and one's a repair, right? Is that what you're asking?
I don't believe for a second that you guys do repairs there. Perhaps you will in the future. I think what you are is a tow company, and there's nothing wrong with a tow company. But what's before us tonight is you can't have a tow company here unless you get a conditional use permit. Your study is for noise in hopes of getting the conditional use permit, right?
Councilmember, can I clarify that?
Yes, sir.
We have applied for a conditional use permit that addresses all of your concerns. Unfortunately, you don't have that in front of you, because I've... And you should have that, because I have an email here from Jessica Hernandez at the building department, at the planning department, who I've been speaking to for the last two months now about the application, so that I've paid for the application fees, the application has been processed. And the email in my last conversation about a week and a half, two weeks ago, with Jessica Hernandez at the planning department, has been that we see a path forward for your application subject to a few things, and one of the things has been this hearing. And they've been waiting on this hearing, because there's been a debate about what is towing, impound, and what is towing storage. And that's been the biggest discussion, because no one can understand what is the difference between impound and towing. And that's why I've brought Mr. Thomas along with us, because it's such a simple thing, but we keep associating impound, which is only done by the regulatory agency, with us. We're only the storage and the towing facility, right? But yes, our goal is to add auto repair.
I understand that. So all you do right now is you tow.
As of right now, we are doing towing and storage.
That's all you do is tow?
Yes.
The city... Go ahead.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes.
Why are you not willing to work with us so we can help make this? I mean, we were going the wrong direction, and we tried to work with you, and you get to work with me. So that's where I think is the problem. Like, we could keep playing semantics. You gotta work with the city to help you out.
Mr. Prophet, we have started working with you by applying for the city planning department. I have started, I have initiated that already. I attempted to contact you guys. I actually attempted to contact the city mayor's office when I received this notice, and I got the runarounds to figure out where to actually file an appeal until I go around and around, and I go down to the clerk's office, and they tell me, "Well, this is actually not from the city mayor's office, this is actually from the police department."
Okay, so...
So I've attempted to, yes.
So, Mr. Prophet, I have a question. How long does it take through staff if, in fact, and I believe him that he's applied for the conditional use? How long does that take?
I would have to defer to... If it's a completed application, it can take probably six to eight weeks, because it's gotta go to Planning Commission for a conditional use permit.
Okay, all right.
May I?
If it's a completed application.
Correct.
If I may. They have the completed application.
Okay.
One of the recent requests in the last two weeks was to do a noise study, a part of this. We submitted that. So that's the confusion between the noise study. They wanted to know, "Okay, we're gonna be doing complete auto repair and towing," so they wanna know. It's a resolution, no problem. So the holdup on the application, from my understanding and my conversation with a planning technician, was this meeting. We have two planning applications at that property. As you may be aware or may not be aware of, that building, 1350 North Texas, was a body shop, or has been a body shop for so many years, right? It's split into two zones.
Is there another active business currently?
They also are applying, so they're split into two. We have decided to take the larger portion and sublease the front portion to also another local Fairfield business owner. They have been put on hold also because of our planning, because of this meeting. So...
So would... Is a conditional use permit... Are you filing two conditional use permits with different business names or all under your name?
No, we have to do two business names. They're similar uses, but they want us to do two business names.
But you own the entire building?
Yes.
Okay.
You need some rest.
Yes. The tenants have... They have to do their own, even though they don't actually have to, but they've requested to do their own, and everything's been put on hold because of this. I think there's just some confusion on that, but I have attempted, Mr. Prophet, to work, and I am here. That's why I'm here as well, is to get this done right now, right? Yes, there has been some confusion, and I apologize once again for that, but now I'm here to resolve that, right? That's why I've made sure the planning application is in there correct. I've completed all the reports they've requested. And a part of that, we have requested complete auto repair and towing. We're still waiting for other permits from the other state departments, but I'd like to make sure that you understand that, you know, a part of this zone, 1350 North Texas, if you look around, there's tow yards there, there's auto repairs around us, there's storage yards behind us.
We get that. We get that. All right. You've answered my question. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas, is there anything else you would like to say?
I will say this. I'm sure he would. I'd much rather he...
Come to the microphone, please, because we're televised.
I'd much rather my client talk to you than me, so I'm sure he'll cooperate with you 100% and could make an appointment right away to go over his application with you. I appreciate your offer.
Let me just say for the record that one of my other concerns was the kind of obstruction to access, people not being able to access their vehicles, going down to this facility to get their vehicles, and there's no one present. I mean, that sounds like more of an impound situation to me, because if it's storage, if my car is in storage and I say, "Guess what? I just changed my mind." I don't want you to store my car anymore, given my car. I should be able to just get my car, because I own the car. And so that's another concern that I have with people having their cars, quote, "stored" at your facility, and then going to the facility and then having no access to their vehicles.
If I may address that, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
So there have been a few issues that PD was called out for. Some of those issues involve not being able to get their vehicle, but it was for customers who came out, and they weren't able to get their vehicles because they weren't able to pay the bill, unfortunately. And the story may be, you know, maybe mixed up a little bit, but there have been incidents in here that are recorded that we also called out, because the customers were being aggressive towards our team members and weren't willing to pay. And so thus creates that dilemma of like, we can't... The customer will file the complaint, they can't get their vehicle. If you can't pay the bill, how can we release the vehicle, right? So there has been some confusion on that as well, but we... Our goal is to get the vehicle to the customer back. All we need to make sure is that the bills are paid and like any other service, you know, that is done.
And you're talking about a storage bill? Your bill for storing their vehicle?
Storage and towing typically.
For storage and towing?
Correct. The ones that have been addressed on here.
So I have a question for Mr. Prophet.
So...
Mr. Vice Mayor, go ahead, please.
Sorry. So how long... In some of these instances, how long did people have their cars there without being able to get out? Do you know?
The three instances, I don't have the exact time and hours. I just know when we were on site, they could not get the vehicle. The police department had to intervene and track down somebody because there was no one present. And when you do run a tow operation during business hours, somebody has to be present.
So were they able to get their cars eventually? And so they didn't really, they could pay their bill, they just couldn't get their car, correct?
Sir, so to address your question, there's been only one incident that there wasn't someone there on time, although he showed up 15 minutes late to open the door. Other times, everyone was able to get their vehicles, whether it be not willing to pay or not, but PD was called to help resolve the matter, to ease the tensions, and I should say. But there was only one instance where they were not able to get the vehicle. There was another incident where, which, with another tow company, which we have now resolved and are now working with the other tow company as well to, to settle our differences, I should say. Yeah.
Okay, does anybody in the public wish to speak or be heard on this item? Seeing none, okay. And do both sides, have you reached the point where you're ready to let things rest as they are?
I appreciate your time, ma'am. Thank you.
So I'll bring this back to council now for formal discussion of what our action will be.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I do apologize, I forgot to mention, you may wanna ask both sides if they wanna have the entire packet, which is Bates 0001 through 0064, considered by the council. Because they talked about some items, but not the entire packet, but it was the product of both their contributions, so I think we just wanna put on the record whether they both want everything to be considered by the council.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
So we'll do that, then, please, okay?
And you do want it considered, Mr. Thomas? And the city as well?
Yes, thank you.
All right, sorry. And then in terms of your next steps, what we've done is, as the fact finders in this, you can make the decision as you want. For your ease of decision, we have prepared a resolution, but you don't need to make a formal resolution until you've talked through the issue. Just to be clear, because it can get a little semantically weird, this is an appeal brought by the tow owners. So if you approve, or what's called sustain, the appeal, it means you're saying that the business license is not revoked, because you're agreeing with the tow company. So an approval of the appeal says they get to keep their business license. If you deny or overrule the appeal, then you're saying, no, the business license is revoked. And then you can make, discuss it and decide it however you want, and then if you like, that can stand as your decision, or you can make a motion and make, approve the resolution 2022-216, and then, Mr. Mayor, you would just check the box for either approval or denial.
So we, I understand what we're supposed to do? Okay? Councilman Pender, I'll.
I was trying to take notes, so I'm gonna make sure. So if we sustain, that's not revoking?
Right.
And then if we overrule, revoking?
Right.
Okay.
Those are our two choices.
I have a, I have a, I have a question. Is, Mr. City Attorney, is another alternative to continue this hearing and see if the parties can work this out? Because.
I knew the lawyer would ask that question, so I've been actually reading over the code while you've all been talking. And the short answer is yes. So let me read the relevant code section under 10B33. So 10B33 gives the council, I'll just read it. "The council shall fix a time and place for hearing such appeal, and the collector shall give notice in writing to such person the time and place of hearing by serving it personally," blah, blah, blah. And they're all here, we have the hearing. "If a timely appeal is filed, the effect of the decision of the collector shall be stayed until the appeal is decided by the council. The findings of the council shall be final and conclusive and shall be served upon the applicant in the manner prescribed above for service of notice of hearing." So, the way I read that is if you continue the hearing, Mr. Chodri cannot be penalized while you consider the action. His business license would continue to be active. Another option that you have is that you could sustain or deny the appeal, and with a term, a legal term called "without prejudice," meaning that you would allow the parties to bring back some action. Like, so for example, you could deny the appeal, saying that you were gonna revoke the license, but you could say you're gonna do it without prejudice and give Mr. Chodri a time to fix the issue and come back and have it reconsidered. If you did that, I would, I would advise that you ask both sides if they're willing to waive any particular regularities, because the code says that your decision is supposed to be final. But if you're, because what I hear you saying, Councilmember Bertani, is that you're trying to find some compromise. But we have to be careful about the code, because the code says you have to make a decision, and once that decision is made, it's final. So if you are trying to get compromise, I would get consent from both parties to that compromise, and then we can craft.
Yeah, and I'm just, and I'm just saying that because, Jim, I mean, it seems like, you know, you're saying, if you would've worked with us, we wouldn't even be here, probably.
Correct.
Right? So it sounds like there is some possibility that there is a resolution short of denying the appeal and canceling the license 100% and they're done. You know, because if you, if you can find, if you, I'm feeling like you feel like you can find some common ground if you have adequate cooperation from the licensees.
That is correct.
That is correct, okay. All right.
But, oh, sorry.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I have a question. We did that, though, they couldn't operate their business, correct?
Well, that's my point. If you, let's say, wanted to continue this to give both sides to work it out.
Yeah.
And you just continued it, then Mr. Chodri's license continues to be active. That's under code, while you are considering this action, until you've made a decision, it's unfair to punish him until the council's made a decision on the appeal. So under the code, his license would remain active. The other option, just that I've given you because Councilmember Bertani asked, and I'm not making, I'm not stating a preference one way or the other, is you could deny the appeal, which would in effect revoke his license, but you could say, we're doing it without prejudice, which is a legal term of saying, we're gonna give you however many days you want, or just say you have time to work it out, and if you work it out to satisfaction of both parties, you can come back for reconsideration, and then we'll reinstate the license. If you do that, though, my recommendation would be to get consent of both parties.
I guess my question was, though, but if they did that, they could not operate their business until they came back.
Correct.
That's all.
Correct.
Sorry. That's all I need.
That's CHP's future. CHP would.
Please, if you're going to speak, come to the microphone, please.
Hold on, I'm not even finished, okay?
CHP.
Hold on, I didn't finish it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let him make his statement, please.
What I, I just wanted clarification, that if we denied it with, without prejudice, that they could not operate their business until they came back. That's the point I was trying to make, before you interrupted me. So go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, I thought you were.
Mr. Chodri.
Just a quick note, our CUP permit is, application is in, I understand the interim manager hasn't received that yet, but we are two to four weeks out for our final decision pending this outcome. And so if we ask for a timeline, and I'm more than happy to work with Mr. Prophet to resolve it, and we can, we have resolved all the concerns that the Planning Department had, we've addressed all those concerns as of yesterday. And so if there's any other concerns that Mr. Prophet has with the PD, we can address that within the timeline as well. As of, as of May, we have currently been, we are currently operating at that location, but, you know, we have not had any concerns, major concerns or anything of that sort. And we hope to keep to do that. And like I said, we're just trying to work with everybody to make sure that our business is active and everything is smooth. So, just wanna make that comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you were going to say?
Councilman Tim?
I have a, I have a concern, well, I'm just gonna tell you straight up, I'm gonna deny your appeal. But I also have a concern, is I don't wanna put you out of business, because I think you just had a come-to-Jesus awakening that the city's not playing games, right? City's not playing games. Now I have a legal question. If we were to give them a stay, now we're allowing them, knowingly allowing them to operate a business where a use permit, conditional use permit is required, but we've kinda waived it or put it off into the future, does the city have liability? If somebody comes in and says, you did it for him, and you shouldn't have, we're gonna sue you, or we want the same consideration?
The short answer is yes, potentially. I will also, though, qualify that by saying that allowing a business license to remain doesn't stop the city's police and code enforcement from pursuing other avenues to enforce code violations or zoning violations, and that's beyond the scope of my knowledge. But just because you allow, you know, the city doesn't, their only mechanism for code violations is not just revoking a business license, there's other mechanisms they have. And Mr. Prophet is probably, or is better attuned to address that. But to answer your question to me, is there liability? Yes. Possibly.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Vice Mayor Vicaro, please.
But would there, okay, but would there be liability for the city if I was to make a recommendation, we deny the appeal, okay, without reserve, without prejudice, right? So they can't operate until they come back and get everything straight. Are we still liable? It doesn't sound like it.
I would posit that you have less liability there because you've taken their license, so they're not, they should not be allowed to operate without the license.
That's exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think that would cut down on any liability, because the operation has stopped until you come back. I mean, to me, that, that sounds like a reasonable recommendation, because they can't operate their business.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yes.
I don't know, I don't know how everybody else feels.
Yeah, I mean, if we deny it, like you're saying, Mr. Vice Mayor, without prejudice, the applicant has to suspend business operations until their paperwork is in compliance with the city code. It diminishes the city's exposure to liability, and quite frankly, I think it's a really good incentive to expedite getting the paperwork correctly filed the way it should be. Right? So, I'm gonna make, I'm, are you, you know, yeah, let's, yeah, so we can just make that recommend, I think that's gonna be my recommendation, I think that's commensurate with what the vice mayor just said.
Okay, so I'll entertain the motion now. Do we have a vote?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Bertani, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Roll call vote, please.
And just to, I'm sorry, just to be clear, the motion is to deny the application, the appeal, but without prejudice to allow the owner to continue through the conditional use permit process?
Right.
So in effect, you're directing staff to continue to allow the conditional use permit process to go forward?
Okay.
But not, I'm sorry.
Yeah, as swiftly as possible in light of these, this hearing tonight. So cooperation will help to expedite, but at the same time, we're saying until, you know, until the applications are approved properly, you guys cannot, you know, business has to be suspended until the paperwork is done properly.
And, and Mr. Mayor, do you wanna ask the applicant whether they waive irregularities in terms of the language of the statute, that it wouldn't be a final and conclusive decision by the council, but you're allowing them time to fix the issue? I think that's, that'd be prudent, that would be my recommendation, but it's your call.
And my sense is that you would, you would agree with that, would you not?
Well, I agree with it, but one caveat, without prejudice is a legal term of art, in certain circles, it doesn't fly. It's not gonna fly with the CHP. He's gonna lose that business probably forever. So it has implications. I understand what you're trying to do, and I greatly appreciate it. My thought would be just quickly that if you could have 30 days to cooperate and just continue this hearing for 30 days or whenever you're available, we'd prefer to come back and supplement with the application and what's been done on it, and hopefully it'd be done by then, and work with this gentleman in the interim. And that could save us those contacts that are extremely important in the towing industry, especially CHP.
Can I ask one question? Is it okay, counsel? Have you had conversations, because I have spoken with CHP and explained to them the processes, the outcomes that we could have? Do you guys have a timeline from them when this has to be decided? I'm assuming they're not a hard dead, it must be tonight. So is there any room to have those continued conversations to say, hey, the city is asking us to do A, B, and C, and we're gonna do that, and then you can get your continued contract with CHP? I'm assuming they would work with you as well.
When you get a black mark against you with CHP, like operating without a legitimate permit, you're done.
But did you guys take into consideration about the city of Fairfield as well?
I'm not CHP.
No, no, I'm just asking about us.
I can, I can tell you that I've handled, last week I did a tow service hearing like this with the CHP. Any little black mark, they don't want you towing cars for the public. They become suspicious about liability. And even though this is without prejudice, I know what they'll do. So it has great implications. A month's continuance would be much better to work it out with you. Just, those are just my thoughts.
Drop the paper.
I've spent enough of your time, I apologize.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call, please, Madam Clark?
Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Panderow?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim? Councilmember Ton, oh, sorry. Vice Mayor Vicaro?
Yes.
And Mayor Price?
Yep, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Six, zero.
Six, zero. Six, zero.
Thank you for your time.
Motion carries six zeros. Councilmember Tonason is not with us. There is no other business before this body. Thank you very much for your presentation, and we are adjourned.